I love the job that I do. Each and every day, I wake up in the morning with a continuous improvement mode in mind. We have to improve our schools each and every day. We get the opportunity to do that. And I think our schools are in a position now to go from a good school system to a great school system. So it's happy, I'm happy to be here today.
Thank you. I'm Patty Nolan, running for reelection to the school committee. And the reason I'm running is I really love my job. And I hope to keep it because I think I'm making a positive difference in our schools where my kids were enrolled from K through 12. I'm grateful to the city and the school district for giving them that opportunity. And I want to be able to continue to use my skills and experience to work on behalf of all kids in the district. Now, what's interesting is I was assessing whether I should run again. And honestly, my overall message is very similar to what got me to run in the first place. Like, we have so much money. It's $27,000 a student. We have a city with people full of passion and experience. We have institutions. We have amazing teachers and great families. Why aren't we the absolute best school in the school district in the state? Why aren't people flocking to Cambridge? Well, many of them are, but not all of them are. So if the issues are the same, do I actually deserve reelection? Why not elect some new folks? Well, because I feel like I've been part of a group of positive momentum within the district to get us, as Mr. Fantini was saying, to get from a good school district to a great school district. I think we have momentum. I think we're on the way. I totally am, uh, that's not grammatically correct. I am very excited about working with the new superintendent, who I think is the real deal in terms of listening to staff, in terms of understanding how to incorporate research-based decision-making into a management style. We have not had that for a long time. And I want to be part of the group working to advance us as a district. I have, my own background is before doing this, my job, working for you, I worked in the public sector, nonprofit sector, and for-profit sector. I worked in corporate settings like McKinsey. I worked for small companies, working with worker-owned co-ops, trying to get jobs for people coming off welfare. I use that experience every day in terms of my management background of understanding finance, budget, strategic planning and thinking, and how it is that we can drive forwards to a solution by bringing in best practice from the outside. So I also honestly reflected to say, well, have we actually done stuff over the last few years or 10 years? And the answer is really yes. We are moving forward. Just this term, I've been a leader in coordination with the entire school committee. No one gets anything done on their own. We've done, we brought world language into more elementary schools after five years of delay. We're leveling up at CRLS in order to try to reduce the segregation in some of our classes. We're revamping our discipline policies even further. We're taking a critical look at our school choice policy. We have a review of assessments, and few are being given. We have someone who knows how to evaluate programs, who is actually looking at the programs that need to be changed. We have a design lab led by teachers. We have opportunities for teacher voice. We're also developing opportunities for student voice. We're developing a strategic vision and have a very more specific strategic plan. So I collaborate with others on all of these, and I understand compromise is necessary. And yet, I am also known for being independent and voting for what I believe is best for students in the district, sometimes at political cost and sometimes when it's not very popular. So I serve knowing that I will not always win, but I do think my combination of skills and background makes me really excited about working for you in the future if I'm reelected. And also, in a really good position to help this district continue to move forward and make good on that promise we all know is there, which is we really can be the best school district in the state, bar none, for all kids, bar none. Thanks so much.
My name is Emily Dexter. This is my first term on the school committee, so it's the first time that I've run for reelection. And before I was on the committee, I was a parent in the schools for 17 years. My two kids went through K through 12, and one graduated from CRLS in 2010, the other one graduated in 2014. And I also work in the education field. I worked, I started my career working as a language specialist at a school for deaf students in Framingham. And then I went into the research field and focused on literacy research for the next part of my career. And what I was, the reason I got into this was I was professionally interested in the schools and what was happening because of the training I had, but I also got more and more involved as a parent as my kids got older in the schools. And I found myself going to school committee members and advocating for various things and analyzing the budget and analyzing data. Then I started a blog. And pretty soon, I was pretty wrapped up in being an activist parent. And folks would say, well, why don't you run for school committee? And I did, and I got on the committee. And I was actually surprised that it made a big difference to step into that new role. Because when I was outside of the committee as a parent activist, I was always saying, please do this, please do this, to the committee. Can you increase staffing or reduce class sizes in the first grade? And it was up to them whether they wanted to or not. Now that I'm on the other side of the table and I'm part of the conversation, I found that I was able to get a lot more done, which makes sense. They would certainly want it to be that way. Some of the things that I feel that I've actually accomplished in the last 20 months, some of this happened during the budget discussion. So I advocated heavily for some more staff who work directly with students, not across the board, but in specific places. So we added some paraprofessionals in some of our first grades that are almost up to 25 kids, because I felt that. And I was hearing from teachers and parents, 25 six-year-olds is too much. I've advocated for guidance counselors because with the enrollment increase, we've been seeing a lot, there's a lot more guidance counselors needed, and social workers and a few other things that you can read about. The other thing that I worked on was trying to get a review of our elementary schools because we've been focusing on the high school for, first, we focused on the high school for about 10 years, then we focused on middle schools for about 10 years. And so it's time really now to focus on the elementary schools. And I think that'll be a big part of next year. So I advocated heavily for that. I also have a lot of training in data analysis and statistics as part of the training of an education researcher. And so I used a lot of data and brought a lot of data forward. So for example, one thing I was concerned about was kids who are chronically absent because we have a small number of kids who missed three, four weeks of school. And so I asked for analysis of that data. Sure enough, there were differences by demographic groups that suggested some kids were just not getting the same opportunity to learn. And by just looking at the data, it helped us all focus on that issue, even though we knew it was happening. When you have something right in front of you in black and white, it helps you focus. And beyond that, general research and evaluation, I think, is very, very important. And I have a lot of training in that, and that's why I value it so heavily, and using research-based practices. I would say, this is going to be a big two years. We're doing, you know, the elementary review that I mentioned. We have a strategic plan, or we have a framework for a strategic plan, so filling in the details, the administration will be presenting that to us. We've got the big budget coming up that starts already. I think we have to be looking at controlled choice and some of the problems. We've been hearing a lot about that. It needs another look. And we have a big question about our early childhood education, how that's going to play out. So I really look forward to our conversation, and thank you for coming.
Just a reminder to our candidates, once you see that pink stick, that means you have 30 seconds left. It's okay.
My name is Will MacArthur. I graduated from Cambridge Public Schools in 2016, and I went to Cambridge Public Schools for 13 years. I had a phenomenal experience in Cambridge Public Schools. I got to run track on a team that competed against some of the best public and private schools in the country. I saw my friends compete in theater festivals and basketball competitions. I was able to do research about the history of Cambridge in this library, in the Cambridge Room. I had consistent access to high-quality curriculum from K to 12. And in every year from K to 12, I had, without exception, I had at least one teacher who shared my racial and socioeconomic background. This is a district that works very well for students like me. But I'm running for school committee because I think that Cambridge Public Schools need a much greater focus on equity than has been placed so far. And I think that the fact that someone with as many intersecting identities and privileges as I have can get a great education in this district, I mean, it's great that some people can get good educational outcomes in this district, but I think we need to be doing more for people for whom the district isn't working well. We can't have a narrative that Cambridge is either a great district or it's not, because it is a great district for some students and for some students it is not. I think that the focus of the school committee over the next two years should be on prioritizing improving equity and improving access for all students in the district. And I think that in order to do that, we need to set a couple of specific priorities. I think that our top goal should be closing gaps in achievement and opportunity. And I know that's not something we can do just as a school committee, but I think that it's an important job for the district to acknowledge that there's a lot of work we can be doing, and there's a lot of work we can be doing in collaboration with the city council and other government agencies. I think that we need to prioritize civic engagement so that every student in every classroom can get access to the same empowering information about the history of activism in Cambridge that is available for students who seek it out as an independent study. I think we need to focus on building communities that are inclusive on the basis of gender and race and socioeconomic status. And specifically, I know that there have been a lot of issues with gender inequality and with gender identity in Cambridge that have been brought up over the past couple of years. I think that this is something that the school committee needs to set as a district priority. And lastly, I think that we need to focus a lot more on using the resources of our teachers in the district to bring forward successful initiatives. I was glad that, as Nolan mentioned, the CPSD Design Lab. But I think there's a lot more we can do to make sure that successful initiatives like Quals Academy at Fletcher Maynard get brought forward and brought to a district-wide level. I think a theme of this district is that a lot of aspects of it work well for a lot of people, but not every aspect of it works well for everyone. And I think that the school committee, in its role as a visioning body, needs to set a vision that says that's not acceptable and that's what we should be focusing on. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Peter Beetros. I am running because for the past, well, for a pretty long time, I've been involved in educational reform around the world, working with schools to improve them. And a few months ago, a few parents and school officials or employees encouraged me to run for the school committee so I could do the same here. The past half decade, I spent as the chief science of edX, which is an MIT-Harvard education initiative to bring evidence-based practice to universities. I've worked with school systems around the world with substantially all of the education research communities to incorporate practices into education there. And I'd like to do the same here. I'm the parent of a junior kindergarten just starting in the district, so I have a very strong vested interest in making the school district work for him. My agenda focuses on a couple of key issues. One of them is bringing evidence-based practice. We've learned a tremendous amount about how people learn in the past two decades, and more importantly, about how to implement it in a classroom. The second piece is teacher empowerment. So the way that you do this is by allowing teachers, most of the problems we have in the district have been solved several times. Going around classrooms, I've seen classrooms that actually do very well with the issues you raise. I've seen classrooms that do very badly. And coming up with mechanisms that more teachers can innovate and can do that, coming up with ways that we can identify which teachers do very well, and coming up with ways that we can disseminate practices through programs like coaching, mentorship, classroom visits. And a third piece is just related to that, a lot of organizational dynamics around improving transparency. So I think I'll pass it on through there.
Thank you very much. My name is Lawrence Kimbrough. I'm a lifelong Cambridge resident. I am a graduate of the Cambridge Public Schools. I'm a former Cambridge Public School employee, and I'm currently a Cambridge Public Schools parent. And I believe I'm the only person running on for the school committee this year who has someone else up here running who's a former student of theirs, and also running who is also the guidance counselor to someone else who's currently on the school committee right now, who's a parent. So I feel like I'm very uniquely qualified to be on the Cambridge School Committee. I want to share a story with you that took place a couple of weeks ago when I was in Davis Square. And I saw a former student of mine, who I work with at the Graham and Park School, who is now currently homeless. And he's having some real struggles and challenges in his life. And he asked me if I had a couch that I could sleep on. And I told him that I did have a couch, but more importantly, I feel like he needed resources in order for him to be able to turn things around for himself. So I asked him if he had an email address where I could send him some information about resources available. This young man said he did not have an email address. I'm not really sure what this young man is doing right now, but he was a graduate of our public schools. And I ask you the question about what do we feel like is most important for our graduates to be able to do upon graduation? It was pretty clear that this young man earned all the credits he needed to graduate from our school. It was pretty clear that he passed all the standardized tests that he needed to graduate from our school. But the question I have for you is, what can he actually do for himself at this point right now to improve his life? And I feel like these are the questions that we need to be asking of our students to ensure that upon graduation, that we know for a fact that they have the skills necessary to go on and be successful in their lives, not just because they accumulated credits or because simply they passed a test, but we know that they have competencies that are social, emotional, and academic, and democratic, that we feel confident that our graduates are ready to take on the challenges of our democracy. And I would ask you, of all the people who are on stage up here that are running, who else do we believe would have recognized that young man as a Cambridge Public School graduate? I believe that I'm uniquely qualified to know who all of our students are. I believe currently our school district wants to be a school district that represents all students. But I would say, how do we know who all of our students are if we haven't attended the schools, if we haven't worked in the schools, and if we're not parents in the schools? I believe I'm uniquely qualified to be a voice for all students, but particularly for students who are on the margins, our low-income students, our students of color. Black Lives Matter. And I think I'm the one candidate who's running for the Cambridge School Committee this year with the experience to be able to represent the unique cross-section of students that attend the Cambridge Public Schools. And if you think that's the case, I would ask for your number of vote on November 7th. Thank you.
My name is Jake Crutchfield, and I'm a local teacher that's running for school committee. This is actually my second time running for school committee, and over the past four years, I've worked in a variety of educational settings throughout the city. I started out as a day-to-day sub throughout Cambridge, where I actually had the opportunity to work at almost every school and in almost every grade level. Then I had the pleasure to spend the last two years working at the Cambridge Port Elementary School as their full-time building substitute. It's really there that I was able to learn what it means to be part of a school community and what it means to make difference in students' lives every single day. In addition to that, I've been teaching after-schools in Cambridge for four years, and I've also trained and run workshops for other after-school teachers here in the city. It's all of these experiences and more that have built towards my passion for education and learning. And it's that passion for education, learning, and teaching that drives for me to be on school committee. I've seen firsthand what makes our schools so special. And it's that so many people that are in those schools, the students, the staff, the families, all share that same passion that I have for education and for learning. But passion isn't enough. And even with all that passion, we still face challenges here in our district. Challenges such as making sure that we have a teaching staff that is as diverse as our student body and culturally reflects all the students in our classroom. Challenges making sure that we're building lines of communication from school to school so that we're able to share our best practices with one another and build beyond them. And the challenge that we've always faced in education, the achievement gap, which has plagued our schools for decades. I'm going to be honest and tell you that I alone don't have all the answers to those problems. But what I can say is that the answer to those problems lies within the community. And I will work as a school committee member, day in and day out, to bring as many voices to the table as possible so that we're tackling these challenges, as we should be, together and as a community. So I hope that come November 7th, you consider me Jake Crutchfield for your number-one vote for school committee. Thank you.
Thank you to Margaret Fuller House for hosting this forum, and thank you to Representative Decker for moderating, and of course, to all of the candidates, both incumbents and new candidates, for running. It's really one of the wonderful aspects of doing this is the dedication, the experience, the commitment of the people running and getting to know them maybe better than most people do. As a product of public schools, a former public school teacher and a parent of two current Cambridge Public Schools students, I'm deeply committed to our students and to our schools. My public education shaped who I am as a person, as an educator, and as a citizen. I want the same thing for my kids and for all of the children of Cambridge, an excellent education grounded in a diverse, loving community of families, teachers, administrators, and community members who are not afraid to challenge each other, to grow and improve. Cambridge has been my home for 16 years, and my children are now in kindergarten in fifth grade in the Cambridge Public Schools. They're both at Graham and Park School. My daughter will be in upper school next year. I'm one of the few candidates with young children in or about to enter our schools. And as it happens, nobody on the committee at the moment has children in the schools, though, you know, there are people on the committee whose children have gone all the way through or are about to enter. So I think that combining those perspectives will be really valuable on the committee. I think we benefit from having all of those perspectives, and both the history, you know, the perspective, and the, you know, present experience that is represented amongst candidates here. As I mentioned, I was a full-time classroom teacher in public schools for five years. I taught primarily high school English. I also taught art, K through 12. And I studied school reform and teacher leadership at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. For 15 years now, I've worked in communications and program management in nonprofits and in higher ed, the past dozen of those years at Brandeis University. And I've been using skills there that I think will also be critical in this role. I think that as a nexus between the community and the administration, the communication role of the school committee is important so that we can have a community-engaged process that informs what we're doing. And the program management perspective is about getting things done. As other candidates have mentioned, you know, we have to be realistic that we're not going to close our achievement gap and our opportunity gap in two years, but we are going to need to move the needle forward consistently. We need to continually improve our schools with a sense of urgency. Every child gets one shot at this. As I mentioned, my daughter's in fifth grade. It feels like she was in kindergarten yesterday and is graduating tomorrow. She and her peers need us to work on these issues right now and take the long view so that what we're doing pays off for generations of children to come. And we need to follow through, evaluate, tweak, support, and improve upon the things we're doing well, and we need to make hard decisions about which initiatives we need to change or eliminate. I have a number of priorities that, you know, you could read more about, and I know my time is just about up, but I do think that guiding the implementation of the strategic plan, focusing on opportunity gap, and ensuring that all of our graduates are ready to succeed in college, in career, and in life is our basic and underlying goal. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Thank you, everyone, for coming in today. My name is Alechi, Alechi Kadet, and I am running for the Cambridge School Committee for a few reasons. First of all, I deeply care about all of our students, and I deeply care about education. And I understand the value of education, especially in these, in these times. Second, I went through the Cambridge Public School System. I started at the Maynard. I went to the Agassi, which is now the Baldwin. And I graduated from CRLS in 2007, went on to Brandeis, and now I'm working as a financial analyst at WGBH. I manage a portfolio of roughly $200 million. And I want to bring my financial analysis skills, especially to the, to the school committee and especially the budget. And third, I'm running because I'm really involved in the community. I'm a board member for the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association. I see our president right there. I'm a board member of the Cambridge Residents Alliance, and I'm a member of the Cambridge Peace Commission. And more than that, I work with the children in Cambridge. I teach chess, and I coach a young ladies basketball team in the summer. Now, I want to say that I too have seen the great aspects of our school system, and I too have seen the not-so-great aspects of our school system. You can have a person like Will, coming from, you know, a well-to-do background, go through our system, do well, and go on to a great school. And you can have someone like me, who, when I was, when I went through the school system, I was at the lower end of the achievement gap. I was an ESL student, and my father passed away when I was four years old. So my mom worked three jobs, and, you know, I struggled, I worked hard, and I was able to succeed in Cambridge. When looking at our school system, there are three distinct phases in a student's life. First, we have K through 5, then we have 6 through 8, and then we have the high school. We have to make sure that each level is strong, properly evaluated, and properly supported. We cannot take our focus off of the high school to focus on the K through 5 school. We have to focus on each of them equally. And I propose that we add another layer, an early education layer. Currently, we have almost 800 families on the junior kindergarten waiting list. As I was canvassing the other day, I ran into a woman who said that her child was number 100 on the waiting list, and it had not moved. And she was fearful that she, her child would start kindergarten without having that pre-K experience. And that's unfair because from the, from the get-go, you have students coming into kindergarten at different academic and social levels. So if we're going to close the achievement gap, we can't just keep having this conversation. We have to make a commitment to ensure, to ensure excellence and high standards for all of our students. And I'm asking for your number-one vote on November 7th. Thank you.
A couple of folks who just joined us.
Hi. My name is Fran Cronin. Thank you, Representative Decker, for hosting us tonight, and also to the Margaret Fuller House, to all of you out there for taking time out of your busy lives to be here, and to my fellow candidates who have been great to campaign with. I apologize for being late. I seem to have gotten the wrong start time. So anyway, I just want to tell you a little bit about why I'm running. The theme to a lot of my remarks is "history is prelude." And it reflects on my own experience, and it also reflects about how I look at the school system. So I moved here as a widow. My kids were eight months, three and a half years old, and I married into a Cambridge family. My husband passed away. So when I moved here, I knew no one. But my very first community here in Cambridge were the schools, with the network of friends that I made through the, through the friends that my kids had in their schools. So I know how powerful those kinds of connections can be. And because of my kids are different, I learned how to advocate for one of my kids. And so that really got me integrated into the schools, advocating and knowing a lot of families. When we look at our schools, let's start with kindergarten, with our entering kindergarten class. Last year, 597 kids entered. Out of that, in, out of that entering kindergarten class, upon enrollment, 245 of them were already identified as high-needs. In third grade, a third of our kids are not reading proficient. So I said, "history is prelude." So we know kids are behind when they come in. How are they doing when they exit our schools? Six years after graduation, 40% of our kids, only 40% of our kids have achieved any kind of degree. And when you disaggregate, looking at low-income, students of color, the numbers go down. So what's my challenge to whoever gets on the school committee, and hopefully that's me, is how do we help more students, not just to graduate from our high school, which we do a really good job? Kids graduate 93%, 95%. But what happens to them after high school? How do we support more kids to graduate successfully from high school? So I have a couple of things that I propose. I'm probably the most experienced person educationally who's running. I'm an Orton-Gillingham certified reading specialist. I've taught ESL. I've taught after-school. And I was elected four years to serve on the Parent Advisory Council for children with special needs. I'm also the only candidate who has experience in the city, city government, and with our school administration. And that's going to be incredibly, critically important as we start to collaborate more and more. So I'm going to be advocating for a couple of key issues, which I'll talk about tonight, and I hope that you will indeed consider me for your number-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today and all the candidates. My apologies too for being late. This is one of the things that come along with being a working parent, as well as serving. Sometimes your schedule just gets a little bit out of whack, so my apologies for that. Two years ago, I decided to run for school committee, and I came before you, and I told you that I was capable, I was competent, and I was qualified to lead. I'm happy to report that nothing has changed in the past two years, but I have added something to that list. I get things done. And I'm proud to share with you some of my first-term accomplishments. In my first term, I led the effort to expand feminine hygiene products in all of our schools. I led a no-suspension policy, particularly geared towards vulnerable kids in our school system that would bring a weapon, drugs, or alcohol to school. There was a policy on our book that said that you would automatically get suspended for 10 days. We know that kids that young don't understand what those items mean. And so instead of punishing kids, we should be protecting them, and my colleagues agree with me, so we removed that. Things like that are really at the core of achievement and opportunity gaps. When we talk about policies that start that young, that stigmatizes kids, that is how we chip away at the opportunity gap. And one of, another thing that I did in my first term was led the district-wide planning initiative. We haven't had a plan in a very long time, and it was a community-oriented process, and we had community members. We had members from our faculty, some of my colleagues from the school committee. We all came together. We all came together to figure out what is the direction that we want our school to go in and identify what that is for us so we can then be more strategic and focused when it comes to allotting resources in our school district. I understand the needs of kids in our public school system because I grew up in public housing. I grew up with a single parent and went on to be the first-generation college student in my family, in addition to get two master's degrees in urban policy and divinity. That story of going from poverty to the middle class is something that just doesn't happen as much as it should anymore. And really, the core of being able to position our children to thrive is making sure that our institution of the school committee is positioned to give our children everything that they can need so they can be successful moving forward. I'll stop there. Thank you so much for having me, and I look forward to continuing this conversation with you this evening.
Okay. So at this time, if you've walked in, you've been given a card to fill out, so hopefully you've been writing questions, and I know the Margaret Fuller House staff is collecting them. I'll start us off with a couple of questions that came in earlier. And the format here, to remind those who came in a little late, is that you'll each have one to two minutes to answer a question. We will tell you how many for each question. If you would like to respond to another question or respond to a candidate's answer and add value, this is really a conversation, I want to remind us, we're not debating, but we're having a conversation and sharing our thoughts, please feel free to do so. If you've been asked a specific question and would like to pass on it, that's fine too. So the question is, "How successful or unsuccessful do you believe Superintendent Young's move to create the middle school is working? Would you consider supporting or leading an initiative to take back the K to 8, to go back to the K to 8 model?" Who wants to start with that, all right? Alechi? We'll just get, jump right on in. Oh, you need this. Sorry.
So when it comes to the upper schools, the 6 through 8, the 6 through 8 program, the middle schools, we have to understand why they were created in the first place. It used to be that in Cambridge, we had a K through 8 program. However, when students got to the high school freshman year, a teacher could tell where that student came from based on the knowledge they had. You had certain kids coming from certain schools who were quoting Socrates and Gandhi, and then you had certain kids coming from certain schools who couldn't do basic math. So what we did was, we created the innovation agenda for middle schools. So when I'm elected and I'm on the school committee, what I want to do is I want to evaluate each program in the upper schools to make sure that they're working properly and they're supported. I interviewed, as I was canvassing the other day, I ran into a teacher who said that the math programs in the upper schools were not up to standard and were not meeting the goals that they were set out to. So these are things that we need to evaluate, analyze, and support to make sure that the upper schools succeed.
Someone else want to take, please pass the mic along.
I, I, I'll stay off the bat.
End of the minute, sorry.
I don't support rolling it back to a K through 8 structure right now because I think that that would take, be an incredible disruption that I just don't think we should undertake at this moment. Right now, we need to continue to support these upper schools as still relatively new schools. There are some very specific things that I think we can focus on. We can hire full-time family liaisons for the upper schools. Elementary has it, high school has it. That need for family engagement does not go away in middle school. We also need to look carefully at the transitions into and out of middle school or upper school, and that sets kids, can set kids on particular paths when they get to high school, and we need to be careful that we're not, you know, pigeonholing kids in one direction or another. And I think we need to look at, you know, those equity questions, which is, are all kids at all upper schools being served equally well? Which means some schools might actually need more resources than other schools because they are facing a particular challenge. So we need to address that. I mean, I think they are getting stronger and stronger, and as Mr. De mentioned, you know, the goal was to make sure that kids did not go into the high school, this is part of the goal, not go into the high school unevenly prepared. There can still be distinct approaches happening in those upper schools, but they need to, children need to come out of those schools equally prepared. We now have that critical mass in each of those schools to treat each child as they are, an individual, and get that support to them.
Thanks.
I have to agree with David in that I totally think that one thing that we need to be doing for our upper schools is making sure that there are family liaisons present there. That role can provide so much for the school and for families, not just during the school time, but out of school time, that that's one thing I would really want to make sure that I do on school committee. As far as going back to our K through 8 system, I too think that that would be causing too much of a disruption for what we have going now, and what we really should be doing is talking to the families and especially to the teachers and understand what is working at our upper schools so that we can identify those practices and then communicate it out to each upper school so that all of our upper schools have the same opportunities. I would also like to say, one thing that we should look into investigating more at our upper schools is if we could be having more co-talk classes. There are some upper schools that do have co-teaching, especially in math, and it's found to be very beneficial for the students. That type of having two teachers in the classroom can make all the difference, especially for the students in the most need.
As a graduate of the K through 8 schools here in Cambridge, I went to King Open, and I certainly benefited from the fact that my kindergarten teacher, Kim, knew me all the way up until eighth grade. I would certainly also say that as a guidance counselor at the freshman campus in 2010, when I had students come to me and say that they wanted to take honors classes, and at the same time, I saw that their writing skills were not up to par to be in honors, but those students shared that they had gotten As all throughout middle school. I think they understand these issues very uniquely. We had middle schools where there were only 10 or 11 eighth graders. We had one middle school where there was a teacher who just had 11 black boys in her class, and that was it. These are not representational valuable experiences for our students. I do support the upper schools. I think we have some great leaders in the upper schools currently. I do think that the upper schools are working towards dismantling the gaps that we have in educational attainment. My, my last year as a guidance counselor at CRLS, we had eighth graders coming up from the middle schools into the high school for the first time, and I had a young black man stand at my desk and say that he wanted to transfer out of his CP class into an honors English class, and I really believe that just that indicator alone showed that some of the upper schools were working, so I do inherently support them.
In the city of Cambridge, we have, we have this habit of doing a lot of new things, and we do it, and we're innovative, and we don't mind tackling challenges. The challenge that we have is going back and seeing if the things that we implement actually work. And so I would say, no, do not want to roll anything back, but rather create the discipline within the school district to evaluate the things that we do put in place and then be able to make changes based on the facts that we know work or don't work. Whenever we do a new initiative, I don't think sometimes people understand the tax that puts on our administration, our teachers, as well as our students, because they're constantly in a state of flux. And so I think that we need to be disciplined in the city of Cambridge. We have a lot of resources. To whom much is given, much is required, and we need to have the discipline to be able to focus our energy in a way that we assess what goes well, assess that does not, and then have the courage to then change things based on facts and evaluations.
So I think students value stability. I would not have changed from the, necessarily from the K to 8 system into a system with separate upper schools. There are a lot of upper degrees for student mentorship when they are going, there is possible restructuring, but the possibility for mentorship from older students to younger students, for having students go through a Frenchian instruction, it's tremendous when you have students go through the same school, but I also wouldn't roll it back. At this point, that would also be a destabilizing effect. My son will be hitting the Potomav Upper School in, I guess he's in junior kindergarten, so in another six or seven years. I have a very strong motivation to fix the schools. I think that the way you do that is with small pilots. Specifically at Potomav Upper School, there are serious issues with the math program. I would like to see that as a place where some of the more innovative teachers in the school system can come in and try different ways of doing things. Usually, pilots actually work very well. That's the Hawthorne effect. That's usually the most innovative teachers. That's usually, there's a lot of scrutiny, and at that point, try to disseminate that out. That's, I guess, I'm out of time, so.
Well, I'll start by saying that I would not favor going back to the previous K through 8 model. I think that there are a lot of frictional issues that happened in the past five years in the upper schools that are attributable largely to how big of a change it was in the district. For just one example, my brother's class at the Vassalane Upper School, over the course of three years, had, I believe, 11 science teachers who were teaching that cohort. And when you have turnover like that, that's something that is destructive to student learning, and that's something that I think would only be recreated for another five years if we were to try to go back to a different model. I do think, now that it has been five years and those frictional issues are starting to dissipate, it's a good time to evaluate what might be some of the structural issues in the upper schools and to look not at changing them, but about specific targeted resources to certain schools to help address those issues. I also think that there's a lot of potential in the upper school model that was central to the pitch of the innovation agenda that hasn't been realized. Specifically, when it was being discussed, I remember I was in seventh grade, and when it was being discussed, a lot of what was brought up was the potential for more extracurricular activities and for curricular alignment so that everyone is learning the same thing across the four upper schools to make it easier for high school teachers to teach. I think that's something we should be pursuing a lot more because I've heard from high school teachers that that's not the case.
So I was not expecting this question, but I vividly remember 2011. For those of you who were part of the conversation at that time, and that's when, over a series of different meetings, the school committee voted to make the change in the structure. And I was obviously not on the committee. I was a parent at that time of high school, my younger student was in high school. It was really painful for this community to go through the process, independent of the final outcome and the final change. There was a lot of anger and pain and suffering, really, of people who were seeing things that they really loved change, and people who wanted something that wasn't working, you know, they wanted it changed because it wasn't working. So if, many of you weren't there, but it was, I could tell you it was painful. So I, no, I don't think we could go back to something. You want to always keep moving forward, but the way I think about the upper schools now is what Dr. Turk called the 6th through 12th grade pathway. So if we think, I don't think of the upper schools as just unto themselves or sort of the next thing after elementary school. I think of what is going to happen 6th through 12th for these kids when they're basically going to transition from very early adolescents, 12-years-old, sixth grade, to almost, you know, basically young adults. Some of them will be 18-years-old when they leave high school. They'll be voting, they'll be, you know, engaged in jobs in the military and everything else. So if we can look at that pathway, that's how I'm thinking about the upper schools right now. Hi. Change is hard. So it was hard to make the change from K through 8 to a K through 5, 6 through 8, and I don't think that we're in a position to start to go backwards. And also, there was a reason why we changed the structure, and some people here alluded to it. And one was that we also had the ISP, which siphoned off lots of students, and as Lawrence had mentioned, there were maybe a dozen black boys in a graduating eighth class in many of our schools, and the teachers in the high school could definitely identify which school students had gone to by their success or lack of success in readiness for ninth grade. So we had a model that was not succeeding for the majority of our students. I would say that we did not support the restructuring as well as I would have liked it to have been supported. We went through a lot of, you know, community strife to make that structure come into being, and I would have liked to have seen as much intent to making sure that they succeeded. And I think one way which we have not really embraced the four schools is to look at them as a system, as a coherent unit, the same way we look at each phase of our schools. We have a K through 5, which again, we should have a lot of parity in terms of what our students learn. Our 6 through 8 model should also be able to provide our students with the kind of readiness that they need to get into high school so that we do not have what some students have achieved and some students haven't based on their experience prior to rising. Thank you.
So as people said, we restructured for the right reasons, but it was a non-structural problem, and we happened to use structure for the change that people felt we needed. We didn't have to do that, but I'm not in favor of going back. If you want to watch me cry on the floor, look at that vote because I did when I supported it against all the research that says K to 8 is better. And for the right reasons, I wanted to give this district a chance to move forward. What happened was, which we have to honestly face, is we implemented it unbelievably poorly. It does not have to take five years to get to good schools, even new schools. You can have some of that energy that it is working in the first year, which we did not have. There are promises still not being filled. What could we have done? We could have ID'd best practice. There were best practices, as was said. There were students coming to the high school unbelievably well-prepared. If those teachers had been in charge of the new subject area in all of our upper schools, we could have identified teachers in every single subject area. If they had been put in charge, this implementation would have gone far, far smoother. We did not mentor principals. Brand-new school in a divided community, and we didn't mentor principals who were coming in. A couple of them had never been principals before. That was not, that was an implementation error. We also did not think through a plan for success. In a few years, we're gonna have to restructure because our schools are not going to be able to fit all the fifth graders that we have. And we did not, we did not monitor, and we did not achieve most of the goals set up for the restructuring. So I just want us to acknowledge these failings and use them going forward to identify how it is that we can be, implement any other program in the future in a much better way and fully support the middle schools and upper schools as they are.
The first thing I can tell you is I'm glad we're not going through any major change right now. You know, it's nice to be in a place that, it's nice to be in a place where we can just focus in on the academics and that we have the resources to move forward. It's really exciting to do that. I think change is unbelievably difficult in education, and I can remember saying to the superintendent at the time, that, I said, "Changing the middle schools is sometimes like opening up a new restaurant," I said to him. "You have to over-resource it in every single aspect so there is not a doubt of a, there's not a modicum of a chance that it's not going to be successful right off, right off the bat." I said, "So invest heavily into that." So he didn't take that advice, but, but, but you know something? I just have to report to you that I spend a lot of time in the middle schools now, and let me give you an example of some of the things that are happening now, which makes it, first of all, kids don't want to leave these middle schools. The kids love the larger cohort of friends that they have there. They feel much more comfortable going to the high school. Instead of eight kids going to the high school, they travel with 80 children going to the high school. So the transition to the high school is made much, much smoother. Schools this year, kids coming into the sixth grade during the summer, there's some of the middle schools that had their parents and children come in, and kids talked about their hopes and dreams about, about what they want to be in the middle schools. So there's a lot of wonderful stuff going on, and the teachers are adding a great deal of leadership and support and making, and making the experience a really worthwhile one. And our extracurricular activities, our extramural activities are very, very strong as well. And our partnerships with nonprofits are very strong and significant. So we're well on our way of fulfilling that dream, a bit delayed, but we're in a good place now.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna ask Kathy Dalton, who had a question and wanted to ask herself. We have a mic for you, Kathy, and I'll.
So I'm, I'm going to, if it's allowed, I'm gonna direct this question to the folks who are not yet on the council, since we've seen what the people who are on the committee, since we've seen what the folks who are already on the committee do about this. As some of you may know, we now have tracking in the middle schools, in the middle slash upper schools, which was instituted when my daughter was just entering seventh. And this has created an unjust system where kids with privilege and kids with parents who are knowledgeable are in the upper-tracked classrooms, and kids who have a bit of challenge or don't have somebody pushing them are in the lower tract. And you can actually walk through the middle schools and look through the window and see which class you're looking at without knowing. I'm not gonna go in, I'm all happy to talk to any of you about what educators in our town say about this. If you were elected to our school committee, what would you do about this?
Lawrence, have a mic.
So I think back to my experience being in third grade at the King Open School, and I was in a reading group with two other black males at the time, and I certainly noticed that the other students in my class that the other students in my classroom who were white had different texts than I had. They had chapters in their books, you know, the pages were a little bit smaller, so they were definitely at a different academic reading level than I was at the time. And my understanding at that period of time was that white students were smarter than black students were. And at that time, you probably wouldn't have been able to tell me otherwise. The effects that tracking has particularly on young students of color who may come from low-income families really can be devastating. Twenty years ago, when I was in high school, one of my friends, Vonell Lomore, wrote an editorial in the Register Forum that was talking about how he was one of the few students of color in honors and AP classes. I had the same experience. We're saying the same thing now, 20 years later, and now it sounds like we're doing, we have tracking at the middle schools as well. Enough is enough. You know, if we are a socially justice-oriented school district, if we think that black lives matter, these practices just cannot continue.
So, I'll also, you know, share my own experience with this while I was subbing at the middle schools, at the upper schools. And I too noticed this, that you do see a separation of students, and I don't know how healthy that is for the mentality of those students that are feeling like they might be left behind. What I can tell you is differentiating instruction for different levels of students is one of the toughest parts about teaching. Figuring out with a class of 20 kids how to provide different experiences but at the same time the same experiences is really difficult. But rather than separating our classes up the way the tracking does, I think we should rather look at it of how can we build in supports for teachers by talking with teachers about what they might need to be able to differentiate their instruction better. And I would think, going back to what I said earlier, how do we use co-teaching as a way to potentially make it easier for teachers to differentiate their instruction so that maybe one of the teachers can work with one section of the class while the other teacher works with the other section, or something like that? Yeah.
Thank you for this question and for highlighting this, this issue. And there's related concerns at the high school as well. I, I'm going to talk personally. I grew up in a community just north of New York City, Greenberg. It's near White Plains. Nobody knows it. But it's much smaller than Cambridge but a similar level of diversity, and this is a question that came up in my town. In fact, we had a district-wide vote about this about 30, 35 years ago when I was in junior high or high school. It was really contentious. It was voted down. My family, I personally, supported not having tracking because it does not serve children well. Some children will do well almost no matter what setup you have, but that's not what we want as a community. It's not what I want. I am pretty confident, actually, that my wife and I can have a good experience for our kids, kind of no matter what happens in Cambridge, as long as they're safe. But that's not a good experience for them, and that's not what I want for them, but more importantly, other kids will get left behind. So, you know, if classes were separated in various ways and in every classroom you saw the same diversity you have in our community, then maybe I'd be open to considering something different. But when it doesn't show that, something is wrong because the, the kids themselves, their ability, their ambition does not separate out along these lines. You need to do it right, just like any educational approach, but it can be done, it has been done, it's been done within Cambridge, it's been done around the country and around the world. We can do it, and we need to do that.
So, personally, I don't agree with tracking. I'm against it, and for a few reasons. First of all, I'll share my personal experiences with tracking. When I was at the high school, I noticed that most of my lower-income friends were on the remedial track, and most of my higher-income friends who had two parents at home, who had the support they needed at home, whose parents knew how to take advantage of our system, were in the AP classes. And that's one of the problems we have at the high school, the segregation that exists in the AP classrooms. So, I would get rid of tracking. What I would say is we need to look at classrooms and evaluate, analyze, and assess, and see which classrooms are struggling. We need to engage teachers and we need to engage parents because parents know their children better than anyone. It might be able to give us insight on how we can better teach their children. Additionally, if we need to provide additional resources to classrooms, meaning books or teachers, we should do so. Our budget this past school committee term was $183 million, and that's only going to go up. So, we have the resources and we should reallocate them properly.
Thank you. My daughter graduated from the high school in 2013 as an honor student, and she's, every time we talk, she says, "Mom, what are you going to do about tracking?" And if there's any place where tracking is wrong, it's in the middle school. We have an opportunity to really support our students with their self-actualization, their self-identification, learning how to be collaborative, collegial, resilient individuals, and preparing them to be robust in high school. And then we have the proper, this is the proper time to really capture that opportunity and take advantage of it. I mentor middle school girls, a lot of eighth-grade girls, girls of color, and they are very articulate about how disparate the treatment is of them in their schools, how the curriculum doesn't relate to them, how they get different treatment. And if this is the kind of experience that they're having in middle school, as Lawrence said, it carries over into the high school. If you're already devalued in middle school, you're not going to feel better about yourself when you get to the high school. And in the high school is when we need our students to feel resilient, to take chances, to really want to experience themselves and grow and be able to graduate successfully. So, I, I really oppose tracking in the middle school, and I think if anything, we need to really support the social-emotional development of our students. Thank you.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm really encouraged by the, the positions that everyone else who has spoken already have taken because I also think that tracking in math in the middle schools is incredibly destructive, not just to the academic prospects of students who are tracked into the lower class, but also to the academic prospects of students who are tracked into the upper class and it's just not the right fit for them, and to the socio-emotional development of all students. I think there, there are fewer ways, the fewer things that will, that will crush someone's academic hopes more than telling them in seventh grade that they're bad at math. And I think that that's what's happening functionally for a lot of students in the district. I also think that there are places for tracking in the high school, but I think there's a lot of evidence that the tracking we have now, including in math, is not ability-based tracking. I've talked to a lot of teachers who said they still have to differentiate instruction even in tracked classes because there are students, largely students of color, in CP classes who are highly academically qualified to be in honors classes, and students in honors classes who just aren't ready yet. I don't think that we should pretend that the tracking we have now is academic tracking. I think we need to acknowledge that there are non-academic components to it. And I think an effective way to start tackling that problem would be to stop soaring students into these levels starting in middle school.
We need to meet students where they are. The Cambridge School District has a tremendous number of students with different backgrounds and different levels, coming in from different school systems around the world. Students come in and leave the district all the time, and we need to be flexible in that all of our students may not be coming in with the same common core curricula. They may develop learning gaps over the summer, and there's a tremendous number of models for instruction which work well on this. The first study that I saw on using technology in classrooms in this context was from a school in Los Altos where there was a model with Khan Academy where students spent half their time at computers and half their time working with instructors. This was a very disadvantaged demographic. The needs severe improvement category disappeared, and many students moved up several grade levels at time because they could move at their own pace. They could have remediations when they had a misconception. They had strong support. I've seen models, there's a school in Hong Kong where students work through different things in groups where, for example, they might be shopping, there might be a model where they're shopping. Some of the students are setting up what they're buying, some are working at the checkout offices, and the more advanced ones are auditing. It's a common project. There are small group projects where students engage in engineering projects and learn from each other. All of these things work, and we need to get them into our district. There's a very large mental barrier. It's actually not hard to do these things, it's just hard to transition from a traditional lecture format to a more modern format. The way you do that is by visiting classrooms, by practicing, by seeing it in action, by coaching, and those are all processes we can put into place. We identify best practices, identify teachers who can visit, bring that back to our district, and have mentorship programs within our district, and we will have differentiated instruction.
I, I think, so I'm going to ask the incumbents a question, a follow-up, and if that doesn't...
This has been, I'm going to respond to.
Okay, and then I have a question, a follow-up question for the incumbents.
So, I'm not in favor of tracking, which assumes you're on a track forever. I am in favor of giving students what they need. And what we have to remember is for the first three years of the restructuring in the upper schools, we, by policy, forbid any kind of level classes. And teachers came and told us, "We cannot teach this." It was from teachers and students who said, "This is not working in math," and we changed. And I support that change. It is true that it might not have been implemented well, and students may be getting different wrong messages, but I really think, remember now, we are doing the right thing. The seventh-grade AMP, contrary to what was asserted, what was true a few years ago, the seventh-grade accelerated math, over half of every subgroup, African-American, Latino, low-income, special ed students are in the accelerated advanced math program. Our goal should be all of the students in that, and that's how we can get there by raising expectations. So, I take issue with the premise that we are not doing it right. We are only doing it right in the last couple of years as we identified that it was something not working, but I support giving students what they need. We do it in other areas. If a student needs more time, I don't want them sitting next to someone who gets it so quickly. That may make them feel behind. What we really need to do is understand how to truly differentiate instruction, and I'm in favor of offering students what they need, and if it includes leveled instruction, I'm in favor of it.
So, it sounds like, the school committee woman Nolan's already answered the question, but for the incumbents, the question would be, it's a follow-up question that was given to me. Do you support the current form of tracking that's being discussed? If you do, why? If not, what have you done to change it, and what will you do moving forward?
Well, I'll just add a little bit, which is what I'm doing to change it is to really focus on the demographics of the students in the accelerated math and also identifying that the real issue is people coming into sixth grade should not be identified, however they're identified, is not ready. And so, we have to actually go back, if we're talking about math, we have to find out what's going on in K to five and provide support for teachers so that all the students coming in, regardless of their background, are actually truly ready. My goal really is, we should have algebra for all by the end of eighth grade. It is something we're on, we're slowly making progress on, and I've been working really hard to try to make that happen truly for all students. I think we can get there. Does that...
Well, first of all, I just want to say that the Cambridge Street Upper School does not, does not track. The principal of the Cambridge Street Upper School has decided to go in another direction, so it's not, it's not all of our middle schools. So, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I was a big supporter of the intensive studies program for many, many years, and it was a completely separate program, and I supported it because I felt, and everyone kept saying to me, "Why do you support it?" And I said, "Listen, it will die a natural death. When all the other schools start to raise a high level, people will, will not want to go to the intensive studies program." But that didn't happen, so we eliminated the intensive studies program. So, in general, I'm, I'm opposed to tracking, actually, for, for a couple of other reasons too, because when you, it's interesting in the middle schools, when you track, not only do you track in math, but those cohort of kids stay together, and they, and they take other subjects together. So, it's even, you know, it's even, it's even worse than in math. But, but, but I do agree with Ms. Nolan is that, you know, I think the answer is, is to get everybody up to the highest levels and have a pathway to do that, and I think that's really, that's really what we need to get to. And so, does that mean we provide more supports for the K through five so they can enable themselves, when these kids, you know, come into middle schools that they're at a different level? So, it's, it's, so that's my response to that.
Okay, and we'll just move down to Ms. Dexter. And to remind you, the question, the follow-up was, "Do you support the current form of tracking, and if not, what will you do to try to address it in the next term?"
And also what we've done so far?
Yeah, it, I mean, this is, this conversation, tracking, no tracking, has been going on for decades, 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 decades. And we tend to think that there's only two options. One is a tracked class where there's two or three levels, and the other is, is the class with people with mixed levels of ability in the same subject, as if there's only two possibilities. One of the things that is happening, it's been happening for a long time, is we're really rethinking how kids learn and models of learning. One of the good things about the upper schools is we can think of this entire pathway, which puts all the structure of the high school in, in conversation with the structure of the upper schools. So, there's been a lot of new models of high school education and middle school education that have been coming out in other places. There's a group called Expeditionary Learning where the middle schools are all structured around large expeditions and large problem-solving projects, and then appended to that are skills classes, small skills classes, not one semester long, but, but to target certain skills. Out in San Diego, there it's High Tech High School. It's not about technology, but it's about collaborative learning at the heart of education. So, I think we need to go to a new model. Thank you.
This is a complicated issue because I think we all have to reconcile with this one thing. Different children need different things. That's all it boils down to. And so, we have to figure out from an institutional perspective, how do we align our budgets to make sure that whatever the model is, there may be some schools that it makes sense to have some level of grouping of students, and there, there are other schools that may not think that that is the right approach for that particular school. And that's what we promote in our school different, district choices. And so, the way I would solve for this challenge is, A, we have to start with the conversation of expectation because that leads certain kids down one path versus children going to another, and I think that that connects to professional development, which is something our school committee this past school year really had a deep conversation about connected to our district-wide framework. So, that's really important. We have to be intentional about having really hard conversations about the intersection of race as well as class and how those things come together that then impacts a child's trajectory in a school district. And so, once we start having those conversations and once we start having opportunities to train our teachers around unconscious bias, maybe then we'll have the opportunity to see some differences as it relates to academic outcomes from, from our children. I think having the conversation strictly around tracking or not to track is really the surface. We need to go underneath and deal with some of the systematic issues that put children on a certain trajectories, and that's what I'm committed to doing.
Thank you. At this time, I have a question that wants to be asked by Elon, who wrote the question. Would you like to read it?
My name is Elon Feitfield, and I am a graduate of CPSD, and I am currently working at the Fletcher-Maiden Academy as the Quads Academy Director. Quads Academy is an all-boys program for third, fourth, and fifth-grade boys at the Fletcher-Maiden Academy. In year one, the boys have improved tremendously academically, athletically, socially, emotionally, and have become more mature. My question to you guys is, what could you do to help bring Quads Academy to the next level in the city of Cambridge?
Monika, why don't you start, and then you can pass it down?
I think that it's really important that our young people are able to see themselves in the people that they work with every day. It's important for them to see themselves and say, "Hey, I can achieve that." And I think the work that you're doing is really laying the foundation for that to happen. And so, we know that we have a diversity of students within our school district, and we need to be intentional about figuring out what are those unique programming opportunities that fall outside of the standard curriculum within our different schools to then be able to help kids and meet them where they are. So, if that is identifying mentors for every single child in that school, well, let's be bold and innovative and included. If that means bringing in extra support so we can look at having tutors there for specific academic needs, let's do it. There's no right or wrong way to meet the needs of kids that we know are struggling in our school district. We have to give ourselves permission to not put ourselves in boxes, but rather open ourselves up to allowing our kids to have exactly what they need in order for them to thrive. So, I say, increase the amount of resources that we provide and give ourselves permission to reimagine what... to reimagine what it is that specific child needs in order for he or she to thrive.
So I would just add a couple of things to what Ms. Bowman just said. I certainly support the work that is going on in Quals Academy. I think it's one of the shining stars within the Cambridge public schools. And my hope is that in, shoot, eight years, if you're still there, my son will be working with you. So, I certainly believe in the work that is being done there at the program. I would also say, from a social and emotional aspect, one additional thing I would like to be thinking about for our young men, is assuring that we are creating anti-sexist young scholars within our schools, to assure that they are able to understand the role that sexism plays in our society, and that our young men are working towards seeing their young female colleagues as equals, providing equal opportunities for them, not only in athletics, just seeing them as equal peers. I certainly have concerns right now that, you know, at the high school, that there are some struggles and challenges with young women feeling accepted. And so I do think this is an additional component that I would like to see happen at Quals Academy, is to ensure that, yes, our young scholars are academically prepared, and that socially, emotionally, that they're getting the supports that they need, but also working to create anti-sexist men as an additional component that I would like to see added.
This is kind of exactly what I was talking about earlier, in highlighting programs that are working well in our district, and sharing those best practices throughout the district. So really, to answer your question about how do we make it happen everywhere, I would say, first, you have to first pilot it out in other schools, and see if you're having the same kind of success that you're having, that you're having within Fletcher Maynard. But I also think we would need to figure out, how do we make sure that we staff this effectively? And I think that, to me, this is a great opportunity for us as a district to try to hire more teachers of color in this particular role, so that we can have more people in the school for students to look up to, that might actually, you know, culturally reflect who they are. And when I think about where we need to be finding those teachers, I think a lot about, already in after-school, we have many teachers of color that work really hard with our students and spend so much time with them. And it would be a great opportunity to be able to introduce them into the school day through something similar, if not exactly like the Quals Academy.
Well, thank you for the question and for the work you're doing. And I, I think this is a great example of something that we're doing within the district, which isn't as well-known throughout the district as it could be. My, I guess I'd describe the way I'd approach this as kind of a grassroots, top-down approach. We're, we're doing a lot of great things at the grassroots in the district. Teachers in their individual classrooms, in their departments, in their schools, programs within schools, programs within the community that interact with the schools, even, you know, other partners we have in the community. But we can't depend on those people who are already doing incredible work, and working really hard to make these things happen, to be the ones to bring it around. We need to say from the top that that's a priority for us, to find what's working and lift it up. Not to assume, of course, that what works in one classroom in one building is going to automatically work in another classroom in another building, but to really look from within for those strengths that we have. And I just want to mention, on the, on the subject of increasing our staff and teachers of color, I think we need to make sure that what we're doing is not only hiring excellent teachers, but supporting those teachers. And I think, again, a grassroots, but a top-down approach, so that we're not putting it on the newest teachers in the district to make that happen, but we are putting in the structures, both in how we hire, in setting up pipelines to bring people in, but in supporting people while they're here, so that they're not trying to invent something themselves or fight against the tide, but they are the tide. We're, I don't know how to work that metaphor the rest of the way, but I think you get the idea.
Elon, I'm proud of you, man. That's, that's a great accomplishment. And in order to really understand Quals, we have to understand why it was started. I went to the Maynard. One of my former classmates, Santos, is sitting right there. At the Maynard, it was majority-minority. It was underperforming. A lot of us did not have fathers. A lot of us had mothers who worked for jobs. A lot of us had mothers who didn't speak English when we went, when we went home. We didn't, we weren't getting home, help on our homework when we went home. So now we have a program like Quals that is holding young men, and especially young men of color, to high academic standards and academic excellence. So I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do when I'm elected. The first thing I'm going to, I'm going, I'm going to do is, I'm going to visit Quals. I'm ashamed I haven't, but I will visit Quals. And I'm going to collect data, because that's what my peers on the school committee are going to want to see, confirm data that Quals is working. Then I'm going to go home, I'm going to write a report, I'm going to present it to the school committee, the superintendent, and then I'm going to look at the budget, which I predict will be $201 million, based on a 10% increase, and I'm going to suggest that we use discretionary spending and fund Quals. But in addition, we have to expand it so that we have a program that helps out young ladies as well. I coached basketball over the summer, and I see what these girls go through, and they need a Quals, too. And one more thing, Manika Bowman said something great. Each student, each school deserve different programs, so we have to put Quals where it's needed, because it might not be needed everywhere, but it should be where it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, does anyone want to know, even though what Quals is, Quals is, you know, Robin Harris, who is here, that's part of, Robin Harris' family's, family, family name, and, and Quals runs out of, you know, due to Robin Harris' leadership. And quite frankly, at the Fletcher Maynard School, there's a lot of great things going on, including their special needs program, and shooting, including their advocacy by Shani, including, you know, you know, there's a lot of tremendous things going on. So, our design thinking, one of the reasons why we created the design thinking concept was exactly to support a program like Quals. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, an opportunity for people to start a new program, to experiment it, to get up and running, to work out all of the kinks, start it in a small way, where, 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 you know, if there's problems, they can be worked out without impacting a larger school system. And so, what Elon has done is, he is fine-tuning a really excellent program, and he's documenting it, and, and, you know, and I, I see no reason why it can't be expanded throughout the whole school system. Elon is also, I should say, was very active in the, he was appointed by the superintendent on the Superintendent's Planning Committee for the District Strategic Plan, and was very active and was very participatory. So this is a young man who has great potential and great character, and the reason why Quals programs works well is because those kids know that this young man loves them, and they know that Robin Harris cares for them, and they know that that whole community cares for them. It's a wonderful program, and I've been there.
So the question, and I agree, it was very, a pleasure to meet you at the superintendent, at many of the district planning meetings. Best practice is to nurture programs that work. That's the definition, right? And to look outside the district, but also inside the district, and to allow them to flourish and nurture. And what Quals brings together, which I want to point out, are hallmarks we know work. It brings together clear, high expectations for students. It also develops relationships with adults, and it also has that component of physical exercise when needed. Those are three components of every successful program out there, particularly for all kids, wherever, whatever your background. So it's, it's that hallmark, you brought it together in a program that deserves replication. What we have to do is understand, as Ms. Edlechi said, understand the program's success, document how it's working, and also why it's working, so that when we go to replicate, often, you can make something work in one place, it's the replication and dissemination of that program that is sometimes challenging. And it may be other schools need a slightly different flavor. It may be that other schools, it would include a component for girls. It may be, it may be mixed. I do think, as several people mentioned, the gender issue is also important. You know, we have Girls' Sports Day, which we love, but there's also some boys who may not do sports. So, building on the success of your program is certainly something we can do, and we can afford to do as a district. So I, I hope to work on it if I'm re-elected.
Okay. Thank you, Elon, for the work that you've done. I have to say, I didn't know the history behind Quals. So thank you, Mr. Fantini. He is always our historian. And thank you, a big shout-out to Robin Harris, who always remains the most innovative principal that we have in our district. So thank you. So it's no surprise that Quals should be started at the Fletcher Maynard. And it's no surprise that it has a wonderful leader who's really taking this program on. One of the challenges is to sustain this program, because Elon may not be there forever. So how do we keep that program going after he leaves? How do we take the best practices that you have established to make sure that we can bring that, a successful best practice to other schools? Because other schools also have vulnerable, at-risk, low-income students who need a mentor, who need an adult in their life, and need constructive activity after-school, which is what you provide. So I think our challenge is, how do we make a good program that we know works systemic for all our vulnerable kids who can really benefit from it? After-school is a great time to do those kinds of activities, those kinds of supports, and how do we sustain programs once we know they work? So thank you, Elon.
Thanks. Yeah, this is a question, I think, about the Quals Academy in particular, which is a program for elementary school, young boys of color, as I understand, and has a lot of leadership aspects and things like that. But it's really a question of how we scale up things to the district level that are working in one school. And we have this dilemma, because we want schools to have autonomy, we want principals and teachers to solve problems in their school, but we also want to feel like a district. And we want to feel like there are certain things that we all do. We all use the same math program right now, for example. So I think something like this, the question would be first, what are the components of that program? What are the problems that you're trying to solve? And are there other places in the district? You know, broadly, we know that problem exists other places in the district, but each school is a different context for the students that are in that school, and different kinds of students come from different neighborhoods. So I think the first question would be, I assume all the educators now know about the Quals, and there's a reason why it hasn't been implemented immediately, but there might already be conversations. And I think that that would be the place to start, with the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, and really talk about what you're accomplishing and how. So, thank you.
So, I mean, I think Quals is indisputably an incredible program, and I appreciate that you asked the question, but I also think it's important to note that no one knows how to scale up Quals better than you do. And so, I think that for any program, keeping the voice of the program director part of the scaling out process through the whole time will be central. And I really appreciate all the conversations we've been able to have this year, specifically about what challenges Quals will face in scaling it up, whether it's about recruiting teachers who are deeply rooted in Cambridge, whether it's about getting school environments with principals who are equally supportive. I think that you have insights into Quals that, regardless of how many conversations you have with people in Cambridge politics, won't be able to be transmitted to anyone else. And for that reason, I think we need a much clearer pathway for scaling up programs that keep the people who have been involved in them from the ground level in decision-making capacities.
So, first of all, thank you for your extremely hard work on Quals, and more broadly, for all of the innovation happening at FMA. And thank you also for coming here and having this conversation, and showing the work that you're doing. What I've seen in some of our classrooms is that there are very innovative programs that don't get spread out. And what we need are processes. This conversation, and so it's a well-functioning body, wouldn't have to happen. What you would be able to do is take the results from Quals, show the rise in grades that students have, which are quite large, show how much it costs, the salary of one employee, and at that point, there will be an internal process by which we will get additional funding, by which we will be able to do this, not just for your program, but for all of the innovation at the district. So that's where we need, first of all, transparency to identify the programs that work; second of all, transparency to be able to measure what the outcomes are. Whereby measure, I don't necessarily mean, here's what happens on test scores. That can be a qualitative argument. This program brings mastery learning in, we know that that results in a tremendous learning gain. But have some estimate of the impact, and have some estimate of this cost, and then drive that to scale programs out. So we need coherent framework to do this. Quals is advancing after that, I'm happy to handle it as a one-off, but more broadly speaking, we need these growth and dissemination, and again, application mechanisms, and that's the job of the school committee.
Thank you. So I just want to say, first, I want to say thank you to our candidates, because this is a really ambitious night here. We've given ourselves a generous amount of time to ask a lot of questions. As you notice, hopefully, I am trying not to cut anyone off at the, at the mark and allow you to really finish your thoughts, and I think that's really because of the amount of time that we have. And as I've said, this is, I, I think, one of the most important roles people have in government, right? Here is school committee. And with that said, I'd like to acknowledge former school committee member, and now extraordinary principal, who's been acknowledged a number of times, Robin Harris. You really, oh, I, I saw that, don't worry. But I do want to say, one of the things for me as a candidate over the last number of years, I was always felt very grounded and grateful when I saw Robin. She is here at many candidate nights, in addition to the 30 full-time plus jobs that it has to be the principal of any of our elementary schools. And it's just phenomenal and innovative. So, thank you. And also, our former mayor, many times, who has been extraordinary, an extraordinary leader and innovator as well, in public education, and who loves Cambridge, I would say almost as much as Robin Harris, just because she knows she comes from a long line of Cambridge. But your love of Cambridge is so deep that nobody would know you weren't actually born here, Mayor Reeves. And just to, again, say thank you to Margaret Fuller House, and I think everyone here's doing a great job. And just to remind you, the mission of Margaret Fuller House really is to provide a home and a space to empower residents in the Port neighborhood, to really be a voice and, and agents in their own neighborhood, and their lives don't just stop at Margaret Fuller House or the neighborhood, it's really the entire city of Cambridge. And to ensure that the city of Cambridge, whether it's our public schools or our, our city council, that are making decisions that really reflect the needs, the values, the opportunities, and the challenge of the Port neighborhood. And so, as you continue to ask and answer the next round of questions, to really keep in mind who the audience is here tonight, whose leadership brought this forum here tonight. And I believe this is the first time that Margaret Fuller House has hosted this kind of a civic forum, so thank you. Personally, I want to thank you for the pizza, because it's like my favorite food, so thank you. And for the opportunity to be able to bring people together prior to the forum starting tonight. That was very, really nice, people had that chance, because not everyone can stay till the end. So with that, I'm trying to give your brains a little mental break, I'm going to move on. I know, I, I really have to say that I'm sitting here in admiration of all of our candidates. It's a lot to sit here. It's a lot to sit there, too. It's a lot to sit here, too, and to wait patiently for when you can take those next 60 seconds and answer that question 15 minutes later. So I'm going to combine two questions that I, that I was given here. And it'll say, it says, "What role do you believe the MCAS should play in our schools? If it is different than the role you see currently playing, what should the school committee do about that?" And then the second part of that question is, "Would you support a three-year moratorium on high-stakes standardized testing in Massachusetts?" So I think we can take that mic, and we can just go that way, and we'll come around.
So, testing is valuable, but testing is badly misused. What testing does is it allows you to monitor what happens in the school. The way that we use testing right now is, first of all, we tie it to high stakes, as you pointed out. Once you tie testing to high stakes, it stops working. I've read about this extensively for, I work as an expert in assessment for the National Academy of Education, the National Science Foundation for the European Commission, with the Army Research Laboratory. Testing doesn't work once you tie it to stakes. Tying school outcomes to one, two, or three numbers fails to give a picture of what happens. The purpose of testing is to monitor, you want to monitor many things. You want to give a rich dashboard of, here is survey data, here is survey data from teachers that shows how empowered they feel, from students as to what attitudes our schools are. Here is a battery of different tests of what happens in schools, and at that point, that is a start of a conversation. In many cases, you can decouple testing, it, well, I'm running on time, so I think I'll pass it to the next candidate, but...
I'm just going to give you the chance to say, would you support the three-year moratorium on MCAS, since that is legislation pending? I just happen to know.
So, being in a place with MIT, with Harvard, with Tufts, my hope is that this is a district where we can figure out how to do this right. If we can't do this right, fine, let's kill testing, but before we do that, I would love to see us try to test used tests correctly, as opposed to misuse them the way we've been doing it for decades.
So I guess I'll, I'll start where Peter left off, and say, if you decouple testing from high stakes, then it becomes a much more valuable tool for identifying. I think testing can be a valuable tool for documenting gaps in student achievement at the end of the year. That, I mean, testing is not a perfect measure of achievement, but I think testing can be a tool for holding districts on a district level accountable. That being said, I think that with the MCAS right now, the MCAS is not a good test for measuring student learning that's going on. I think it's not well-designed to fully capture what's going on in classrooms, and I think it's not well-designed to fully capture what's going on in classrooms, and I would support a three-year moratorium on high-stakes MCAS testing. I also think something that needs to be part of the conversation is the amount of instructional time that is lost to test prep and also to test administration. If you're a teacher in a seventh-grade classroom, you essentially lose seven full school days of instructional time, because theoretically, it's just supposed to be a block in the morning, but it can end up taking a full school day, and I think that's something that needs to be part of the conversation. It's not just that tests have a detrimental effect, this is time that we could be using a lot better.
Can I just ask a clarifying question of somebody who might know about this bill? Is this a moratorium on the implementation, on the administration of tests or the use of the test scores?
So, last year, it was a moratorium on using it as a high-stakes mechanism, allowing it to happen. This year, it's actually just a moratorium.
So that they wouldn't be, it wouldn't even be given to kids? Okay, good.
Which does not preclude, as you all know, there's still plenty of assessments that are still occurring.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, so, I mean, this bill may or may not pass, so we should be prepared for both of it. But this is the way I think about things. I try to look forward, back, and where we are. So my kids entered in the late '90s CPS, there really wasn't a lot of MCAS testing, there wasn't a lot of stuff around standards, and so I remember a lot of really joyous things in their schools that weren't, that are not happening now because of testing. And I also look forward, there's a consortium in the state that's looking at new ways of assessing schools and new ways of assessing students, and that, we are part of that consortium. I think in three years, standardized testing is pretty much going to go away in three to five years nationally, and if it goes, if we have a moratorium on it, great, we can get started right away with other measures, but even if that bill doesn't pass, we need to be thinking about the three to five years in the future where we're not going to have standardized tests as we know them, or we're not going to have these high stakes, and we need to be developing other types of assessment or connecting with other school districts like Somerville, Arlington are all members of this consortium, and talking about things like, how do you really use performance assessments? How do you use diagnostic tests, both to drive change, to support student learning, to give information to parents? And these are all the things that standardized testing is trying to accomplish in one test, and it's really too much. But certainly, I would, I would support moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Decker, for this question. I think one thing we have to separate is different types of assessments. So MCAS are relative tests, school districts to other school districts in the state, and tests have been used to compare states to state around the country. I think the focus for us should be on what we call district-determined measures. What's our criteria? What's our definition for success? And I think that is really where our emphasis and focus should be, and not trying to have, use our time to have prep for tests and do all that kind of stuff, but using our own tools, our curriculum, our adherence to frameworks that we feel are really important for guiding what we teach our students year to year for them to graduate successfully into the next year. I think that is where our focus should be, because right now, we know that third-grade proficiency is not where it should be, so what are we doing to increase proficiency of reading at the end of third grade? And I would look to ourselves to determine what we need to know about our students, not what the state is telling us. Thank you.
So standardized testing is really hard. I think it should be part of a district, I think it is, we have way overcorrected. I think when, I was young, many, many years ago, probably 50 years ago, we all took tests, nobody even knew it was coming, there was no test prep, we just took them and they were done. And I think if we can get back to what it is that a test is supposed to show, which is to help the teachers understand are they being effective, and help parents know whether they're learning what they, whether the kids are learning what they think they should know, we have a lot of pressure in this district from people saying, "Don't get rid of those tests, because I want to know how my kids are doing." So it's incumbent on us to make sure we're providing them with the data to give them confidence that their children are learning what they need. This consortium, the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Education Assessment, which six districts are participating in, is exactly where Cambridge needs to be. I have advocated for us to join it, we have a new superintendent, I know he's talking to the people about it, that is exactly where we can go, because it is much more comprehensive, it's whole-child-based assessments, it includes some more content, what looks like assessments that we're used to, but also includes a whole range of other measures of psychological safety in the classroom, of whether kids are joyful, of whether families are engaged, that's where we need to go, and I think that is where Cambridge could absolutely lead the way, and if we need to, then tell the state that's where we're going to go regardless, and provide a waiver for us from all the other assessments that we're doing.
So I was, you know, I've been in the school system for 34 years, so when there wasn't MCAS, and there wasn't a measuring system or an accountability system in our schools a long time ago, I have to tell you that, you know, children of color were not getting educated as well as they could be, and special needs children weren't being educated as well as they should be, and immigrant children weren't being measured, weren't being, making progress. So it's important to me that we have a measuring system, and so, to the extent that, you know, and I, and I'm not a big, I'm not a big test guy, but I want to make sure, and with, with testing came billions of dollars that went to schools throughout Massachusetts, to provide them, you know, to funnel a lot of money into those schools to make sure, you know, that they were given the resources that they needed. So, you know, if, if, if somebody can present to me an alternative that will, you know, maybe we can develop that alternative within our school system. So I think the process needs to be something like, we need to convince the state that our internal accountability system is showing what we need to show so that our parents have that information, so that they know that their children are reading and writing at grade level, and I think that's what most parents want. So I'm open, I'm open for the discussion, but I've come from the place, when you don't have measurements, the least vulnerable children get hurt. And with that, I actually have to leave.
Now, this is a, this is a complicated question, but we're lucky that I'm an amateur historian. So, when we look at testing, we have to ask ourselves, why do we have testing to begin with? It used to be that, there was a point where we had no testing, so students would go grade to grade to grade to grade to grade, graduate from the high school, and many of them weren't proficient in algebra, didn't know basic science. So we put a, a testing in place so that we could measure and ensure that our students were meeting standards. But I'm against testing, and I support the moratorium for a few reasons. I believe when it comes to testing, we should have high, high standards for all our children, but low stakes. Just because you don't perform well on a standardized test, doesn't mean you can't be an engineer, electrician, or scientist. And the standardized testing is biased in a certain way, because I was in a classroom where I knew brilliant kids, but they didn't take the MCAS prep, so they didn't know the little tricks of the trade to get themselves a higher score on the test. Luckily, I have a solution on what we can put in place other than testing. Let's go to a portfolio-based system, where we have, where we judge students on a portfolio, an entire body of work instead of a three-hour exam. And we can look at it, we can review it, we can analyze, we can spot weaknesses, and we can, we can make sure that students are growing, and we can also put an emphasis on professional development. Thank you.
My youthful glow might surprise, might make this a surprise, but I was actually teaching in Massachusetts public schools as the MCAS was being rolled out in the mid-'90s, kind of just on the cusp of the increased number of tests and the high-stakes implementation, and saw that transition happening. And also remember that, you know, amateur historian indeed, it's important to know the history. MCAS, Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. It is not a comprehensive assessment system. I would support a comprehensive assessment system, portfolio elements, there are a lot of ways we could have, we'll get a better picture of what our students are, where our students are. And we're doing a lot of those things already, but, but we're also having to fight against, you know, meeting requirements that are being imposed. It's important to make sure, as a state, as a, as a country, that schools are doing that. But if you're doing it, you know, you should be able to do that in a way that doesn't take away from the wonderful, rich curriculum that we have and have had here in Cambridge. So, and I, and plus, you know, my own kids' teachers have been saying, "Look, you know, MCAS, it gives, it basically tells us what we already knew about the students, but you're too late to do anything about it." This is not accomplishing what we need it to accomplish, and I would support a moratorium, but only if we're making sure that we're holding ourselves accountable into every subgroup, not only every individual student, but every subgroup. There's a lot of important information we get by looking at, at results, we just need better results, and we need to gather them in a way that's not actually taking down the education it's trying to support in the process.
So, I'm going to first answer your second question, which is, yes, I would support it, and also thank you for all of your work on this issue, because I think it is incredibly important. Recently, there was actually an article in the Cambridge Day, an opinion piece by a couple of teachers and the head of the CEA about this issue. And I have to tell you, if you really want to see how teachers think about this, try reading that article, because it gives you really good insight on teachers' perspective. I will highlight a couple of things and then give my own piece on some. One thing, and this is something that David alluded to, the, the information that we're actually getting from these tests, the student scores, isn't actually helpful in the classroom for the teachers. By the time they get it, the students are already on to the next year. And then, the other thing that the article mentions that really hits home with me, nothing can explain the stress of the seven to eight weeks of the testing schedule in the schools during that time. It, it puts everybody on high alert, not just the students, but the, the teachers and the families and everybody. And that kind of stress is something that we really don't want our schools to be about. And then I would add personally, a lot of the times, the testing schedule itself doesn't necessarily work with the material that the teachers are trying to teach, they might not always have an opportunity to get through all of the material that they might have to be tested on, and that, to me, is a broken system. So, yeah, I could not support the, your efforts more.
I certainly agree with a lot of the ideas that have been shared up here. And as someone who worked at the Bramham Park School for a year and saw portfolio presentations of student learning, you know, happen at a really, really high level, I do think that is the direction as a schools district that we need to go in for all of our students to assure that they are graduating from our schools with the skills that they need to succeed in our democracy. So I think that is an offer, a form of assessment that I certainly would like to use. I would also address, you know, Fred's question about alternatives to an MCAS. I do think the Accuplacer exam, particularly at the high school level, is something that we should be looking to give all of our students. It is a test that state colleges, universities are using to assess preparedness for college-level math and English. Too many of our students are graduating from the public schools in Cambridge and unfortunately passing, or not passing, excuse me, the Accuplacer exam in our testing intermedia courses that they didn't have to pay for and not receive any credit. I think this is devastating, I think this is unfortunate, and that we do need to be finding alternative forms of assessment to ensure that our kids are prepared for the future in this country, and I do think the Accuplacer is actually an accurate exam to use at the high school level if we do want to assure that our kids are college-ready.
I'm going to be very honest, this, the whole conversation around assessment makes me very nervous, because as a woman and a woman of color, I know what the gaps are in our school district right now currently, and my fear is if you go to a different model, how will we be able to assess? And I am very much for getting rid of, you know, high-pressure tests that put unnecessary burdens on our students, so I would definitely support a moratorium. However, as a woman and a woman of color, my fear is that, exactly what Fred spoke about before he left, how will we ensure that that will not have a direct correlation with our students not being able to get what they need in a classroom setting? So I just think that this issue is very complicated, and we need to figure out as a school district, as a community, if we go in a certain direction, what are the things that we're going to put in place to acknowledge that unconscious bias is a very real thing, and it impacts our school district, and it impacts how kids learn, period. That's a fact. So what will we do to then be able to make sure that we are assessing what we're teaching in a way that will produce the academic outcomes that we want to see for all of our children?
At this time, I want to thank you, I'm going to ask, Catherine had a question she submitted that she'd like to ask herself. Catherine, are you here? Up.
Thank you, everyone, for, it's been great. I just want to say thank you all for your honesty so far tonight, it's been really, really great to learn more about all of you and where you stand on the issues. So, Manika already touched on this a bit, but Cambridge as a district really seems to have a proclivity to jump at new initiatives and innovation, and really want to be on the cutting edge of everything, rather than seeing a strategy through long enough to see results. As we know, a lot of times, policy changes take a while for us to see actual results come about. So how do you think the district should balance long-term strategy with innovation?
Oh, no worries. That's a good question. Cambridge is, Cambridge is really good at starting new initiatives. I like to use the saying, Cambridge is good at something we like to call spray and pray. You start a bunch of new initiatives and hope that a few of them work, right? So what I want to see done is this, I want to take a look at the budget, I want to take a look at the programs, and I want to evaluate and analyze for success to see what's working. Let's take a look at a program like what we talked about earlier, the Innovation Agenda, a new initiative in its infancy, in its adolescence, it's fairly young. So we have to make a commitment to give it a few years to really evaluate it, analyze it, and support it where need be. And that's going to be my standard on the new initiatives we put in place, how we make a commitment to evaluate, evaluate, analyze, and support. Thank you.
This is a great question, and it's not an issue that's unique to Cambridge, but it's something I've been talking about a lot, too. I share that concern. I mean, we have this tendency to kind of churn through policy initiatives, and we need to make sure that we are following through, that we're tweaking things, supporting them, evaluating them. Sometimes we do have to cut something. Sometimes we need to lift up something that we've been doing for 20, 30, 40, you know, 50 years that needs adjustment for, you know, you know, realities as they, as they evolve, but needs support. I mean, there's, nothing sadder to me than to hear about some wonderful program that doesn't exist anymore because a particular teacher retired. And there's really no other reason for disappearing than that. You know, and there's a great book on this called Spinning Our Wheels, about particularly how cycles of leadership can lead to this. You know, we have a new superintendent, I'm very optimistic, I think we're off to a great start. There's a risk that you get a phenomenon where somebody comes in, and understandably, they have expertise, they have ideas, they want to make their mark, they do that, they get the ball rolling, and maybe they actually move on to something else, this happens, new person comes in, you start the same cycle over again, and that ball is constantly rolling, but you never actually, you know, get moving forward. I think the strategic plan framework is a good start, and we're going to have to stay really focused, that we follow through on this, that we don't forget about what's already here, and what might already be working towards these goals, or can be, you know, tweaked to do a better job of that, and be mindful of that context. It's hurting teachers, it's hurting students when we're just constantly doing new stuff. But then again, we should be open still, right? It's a balance.
Thank you for this question. It's funny, I was just talking to two people in the crowd about this right before we started this forum. I do think that there is initiative fatigue within our city, and I can tell you, for the teacher perspective of things, nothing can be more challenging than constantly having to change your practice and master your practice when the new fat of initiatives comes forward every now and then. So, as far as that goes, I think this is putting so much strain on our teachers, as far as stress on our teachers, that I think is a little bit unnecessary. A lot of us will probably talk about the importance of evaluating what we have, making sure we're having conversations about what's working, which I 100% agree with, but what I want to talk about is how we do that work. What I would love to see is for us to use our subcommittees at school committee to take a more proactive approach on this, so that we're actually reaching out to community members, including teachers and families, and students even, to get their opinion on what they think about initiatives, so that when we create policy at the subcommittee level, we can then present it to the committee as a large. And that's how I think we, as a committee, can be engaging more of the community in this process of evaluating and reviewing our work.
No, I would say from an innovation standpoint, that if you're not moving forward, that you're falling behind. So I do think it's important to make sure that we are asking teachers, that we're asking students, that we're asking families about, you know, what all of their needs are, to assure that we are putting new initiatives in place that actually do meet the needs of our students. I think that is valuable and important, and something that must be considered. And I also think it's important to make sure that we are asking families of color, that we're asking low-income families, families whose voice has oftentimes been left unheard, you know, by the Cambridge public schools, to make sure that they also have input in any sort of innovation. any sort of innovation or ideas that we want to make sure we're putting forth. So I do think those are really, really important to make sure that we're considering and thinking about. That innovation is something that we need within our school district. In order to prevent that sort of burnout that you're speaking of, I think making sure that teachers, counselors, school psychologists, all the educators within our schools actually are playing a role in terms of evaluating innovation to make sure that it's working and that we are including all families, all students in conversation to ensure that whatever comes next is something that is going to meet the specific needs of our students, particularly our low-income students and our students of color, to ensure that they are getting the education that they need in order to be successful, which historically I don't feel like they have.
So this was really at the core of the work that I did in my first term. Um, I was the chair of the onboarding process for our superintendent, and we gave him the mandate through that subcommittee, that ad hoc subcommittee, to come up with an entry plan for the district that led to our strategic framework that we currently have. And the reason why I was so committed to that work as a new school committee member is because we have a tendency within our school district, um, to kind of jump any and every time there's a new concept or a new ideal that comes forward. And there is definitely a place for that. We need to be able to be nimble, but I saw that that was at the expense of students. I saw that that was at the expense of our administration, that was at the expense of our teachers. And as a school district that can spend up to over a hundred and eighty million dollars on seven million, uh, seven thousand kids, I think it is our responsibility to be laser-focused because if we did not have those resources, of, like other school districts, we would be forced to make very hard decisions around what we can spend money on and what we cannot. And so as a practice in my first term, I really tried to push the school district through our onboarding of the new superintendent to get razor-focused as it relates to the goals that we want to see for our schools, as well as assess what we're doing, and then position ourselves to make the really hard decisions around what we move forward with and the things that we need to walk away from. But we need to have the infrastructure in place to be able to do that, and that is the work that I did in my first term by onboarding our new superintendent.
So I don't think we have initiative fatigue, so we have top-down fatigue. Initiatives that exactly as you described, come down on teachers and teachers have to implement. What I see is a tremendous amount of very interesting innovation happening from classrooms, teach, from, from teachers, from parents, from community leaders, and that's something we need to support. That's how you get innovation. We do need innovation if we are not moving forward, standing still. The way you do that is by getting rid of the policies that have built up from these initiatives over time, allowing teachers to be innovative, and then identifying the things that fit with our strategic vision. There is a teacher that is closing the achievement gap, there's a teacher that's only differentiated instruction very well, and then coming up with mechanisms whereby we can disseminate those things out, not forcefully, not by saying, "That works, now you, you, and you have to do that, but that works." Hey, have a look at this, see how this works. And then if other people want to pick up on it, if it's showing results, we fund it more so other people can do it as well. If it's not working, we might defund it, but that's sort of, that's sort of the way you get innovation, and that's the way you get initiatives. And I don't think people ever get tired of that. And I also mentioned that if there is an initiative somebody is doing and no one else wants to pick up on it, and that person goes away, it's okay if it dies. That sort of churn is occasionally okay as well, even if it's a good one.
So I think that a really important piece of this conversation is kind of where we are now. And I think a good example of that is kind of the situation around early childhood education in the district. A lot of people I've spoken to refer to what we have as a patchwork, and I think that's pretty accurate. I think there are profound equity issues when we implement some initiatives and don't really have a deliberate means of either implementing them citywide or letting them go away. And I think that whenever we implement an initiative that we call a pilot program, it's important that we really conceive of it as a pilot program and that we think of it taking one of two paths. Either it's successful and it gets expanded district-wide, or it's unsuccessful and it doesn't get expanded district-wide and it gets defunded. I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of initiatives that can work well in individual schools, but I think that every initiative after three to five years, in order to maintain an equity of opportunity in the district, it's important that we look at these initiatives and make sure that they don't just become programs that are giving funding to a group of students who ended up in the pilot at the expense of every other student.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Catherine, because I think it's really interesting. What is an initiative and what isn't? Um, what is just improving practice or improving your curriculum versus an initiative? Um, the Innovation Agenda was not an initiative, it was restructuring. Um, and it wasn't piloted or anything else, we just restructured. So I don't, I, it was enormously, um, difficult, it took a lot of effort, but I wouldn't say that was an initiative. I think what I hear from teachers when they talk of, well, one, and it depends on time. So for example, 10 years ago, we put in a program called AVID in the high school, which is a support program, and we're still doing it, but I wouldn't say it's an initiative, it's, it's absorbed into our practice. What I think I've heard from teachers is the initiatives that are most difficult are bringing in a new adopted curriculum. So for example, we brought in a math curriculum that we bought and purchased, et cetera, or a professional development curriculum where everybody is putting in a lot of time on a certain topic, and the teachers themselves didn't necessarily have input into whether that would be the topic. So I think the question is, what is an initiative? How much input do the teachers have? The teachers should be having a lot of input into, um, moving that change forward and really thinking about what teacher capacity is to absorb new things. Thank you.
Hi, thank you Catherine for this question. Um, so I think overall, I think we should have a litmus test for anything that we do, and that should be, does it advance student achievement and does it support student well-being? And those are two key critical factors on supporting students. And I think that, um, we have to, one of the problems I think that has challenged us, that we are a very resource-intensive environment. We have a lot of nonprofits with a lot of money, with a lot of initiatives, they bring them to our district, and, uh, the district has not had, I think, a lot of discipline around what we think or who should be appropriate partners to work in our schools. We have a lot of replication of programs, and again, a lot of these things are relationship-built, which is a good thing, but at the same time, we don't, we have a, we have a hodgepodge of a lot of programs that support our kids. So I think that we have to step back, impose some discipline on what is it that we're trying to achieve that really supports student achievement and student well-being? Do we have replication of programs, and what's the criteria for what we're looking for in a successful program? Thank you.
It's really nice going after everyone, because all of them had an element of truth to what they were saying, so I'll just focus on a couple other things, really, every single one. Um, I, I do think sometimes our problem is not too many initiatives, it's that we're not actually evaluating and closing down the programs that aren't working. So it's sometimes the opposite of that. And we don't, what we don't do well is once we implement, to monitor, to refine, to adjust. So you have a new initiative, it doesn't mean you have to either shut it down or double it, you maybe have to adjust it, you have to refine it, you have to figure out what's working, who, for whom it's working. That we can do a much better job of. I also want to acknowledge that it's what, uh, Pietro said, it's, it's kind of overload of initiatives, but if it's bubbling up from the classroom, I mean, things we talked about, Qualz Academy, is that a new initiative? Because I support it, but that would be a new initiative. Does that mean we shouldn't do it because we have too much overload? The Design Lab, that was a new initiative, I totally support it because it's coming, but it was coming up from the classrooms. The UnConference, which is a way that teachers come in and instead of being told, "Here's your PD, here's your professional development," you are actually going to decide, what do you want to work on? That was a new initiative. By all reports from our staff, it was an improvement on what we were doing. So I think if we get to the, um, situation where we are monitoring and implementing programs with a very key focus and, on what it is that we're expecting, and then when it's meeting it, say, "Great, go forward," and when it's not meeting it, then adjust or, or, or do away with it.
Hold on to it, we'll come back this way. Thank you, Patty. And again, I want to thank all the candidates for their stamina. They have 22 days before the election day, I believe, correct? Right? So they are exhausted and burned out, but yet they get energized at forums like this and when they get to meet voters and people who are committed and, uh, curious about how they're going to, in fact, strengthen our schools. So thank you, and you guys are doing great. Um, my question here would be, can you name three resources available to our school community when addressing issues of violence in its many forms, whether it's domestic, sexual assault, or violence in the street? Do you think that those resources available to our schools are adequate at this time?
Um, so one of the best resources, which is a citywide resource, that is a joint program with the police department and the school department in the city, that tries to address students who are in trauma and in need and ensure they don't get ensnared in the criminal justice system, but in fact get the support and resources they need to stay out of the criminal justice system, both as, um, a victim or a perpetrator, to really work with what are the root causes of some of the behavior that could potentially lead to being involved in the criminal justice, which does no one any good, costs a ton of money, and doesn't address the underlying question. Whether we have enough resources, no, however, we're working on it. I think the introduction within our schools of having a specific person whose job title is social emotional learning and resources, is someone who is bringing together a range of, of opportunities, but one of them very specifically is on working with, um, uh, students who have trauma in their lives, including, uh, students who have been, uh, witnessed violence or have been victims of violence, and to bring together resources for not just the student, but their families and the staff all working with them, because that's something we have to remember, those students need, oh, I'm already out of time. All right, I have to, and then you, you asked for a, a third resource, which is within each of our individual schools to focus on the professional development of teachers in order to identify when it is that students are, are in need. Students aren't going to often times come up and tell you when they have a need, and particularly if they have either witnessed violence or experienced violence, and we need all of our, not just teachers, but all of our staff trained in how it is that they can ensure that they're identifying and working, uh, very sensitively with kids who are, um, doing that. We are working on it, I don't think we're there yet, but the amazing thing about our district is that is one of the resources we are starting to.
Um, first part of the question, do we have enough resources? No. Um, do we have resources? Yes. Um, we have, we are very fortunate, uh, through our police department, we have a program called the Safety Net, and this is really an exemplary program, it's a national model, where we have, um, uh, incarceration deterred and for, uh, for juveniles who perhaps, you know, are in serious trouble, but we have a way to mitigate them being involved in the system, to give them the kinds of supports and services they might need to help them, um, overcome whatever challenges they might have had. So I think that we have, are very, very fortunate that we have that. We also have a, a very, um, active program in town to help women in domestic partner issues called Transition House, which has done a lot of work in the high school, and last year, the girls, the women in the high school actually had a walkout saying that they needed more support, Transition House was with them, so was the Women's Commission in Cambridge, they were with these students. They also have a program called Girls Talk, which is in the high school at lunchtime to talk to students, and we do have very well-trained safety officers in each of our schools, but we can always do more. Thank you.
Wow, I mean, violence is so deep and frightening. It's sort of the opposite of a lot of learning that we're trying to get, which is deep and positive, and violence is the opposite of that. And guns, we had, lost two young men in Cambridge and Somerville, uh, very recently, uh, who were killed by guns. I think, um, we need to have this in place when we're thinking about the plan. The worst thing that can happen is to become a perpetrator of violence or a victim of violence. It's very gendered, uh, males tend to be perpetrators of violence and males, and females are victims. I think we need to look three places. First is the K through 12 health and wellness curriculum that we have in place, that talks a lot about managing emotions and making good choices and relationships, and we really need to build that inner strength in all of our, uh, our students, and it has to have some gendered component, especially as kids get older, some, some, some things that are specific to boys, some things that are specific to girls. Um, so I think that curriculum is what, the first place we want to start. Uh, the second place is, um, I think as everybody said, having things in place for, uh, victims or people who are suffering from violence or trauma, either clinical people in our schools, um, because, and ways to find out that, or, you know, we have resources in the community, so that's the, um, that's the next one. And the other types of programs we're doing is around teachers. So the principal of the high school this year, in response to, um, the walkout on sexual harassment and violence that the girls had, brought in a program for male teachers, I can't remember the name of it, but it was written up in the newspaper, and all the male teachers and administrators did work themselves on their own maleness and masculinity. Thank you.
So I just want to echo all the shout-outs that other people gave to programs and specifically to Transition House, and I think it's also important to note the work that students at the high school have been doing through Sisters on the Runway to support Transition House. And then I also think some, some of the other resources that people go to in the community aren't necessarily specific resources, they're the people they see every day. So I think that would be classroom teachers, um, Cambridge Police Department officers, specifically community relations officers and school resource officers, and people working at the youth centers. And like, in my experience as a kid in Cambridge, those are all people who I've talked to and who my friends have talked to. I think that also in general, it's important to note, we have a lot of these resources. I don't think we do a good job communicating with people that they're available, specifically around reporting for domestic and gender-based violence. I think there's a lot more we can do at the high school. Just in my experience in college, the first thing that, on the, on the second day of school, they went through and explained what a confidential resource was versus what a private resource was, and explained basically who you should report what incident to if you wanted a specific courses of action to happen. I think that's something that I've heard from a lot of my friends in high school, they could have benefited from, and that having a framework like that is productive. It's not enough to just have the resources, we need to look at how people access them and make it easier for them to do that.
So I think I'm going to build on what you folks said, since you cover a lot of the resources. The next step is to break the cycle of violence with the kids coming out of schools, and there, I think, a lot of the policies that we have, I actually saw you on a lot of work on removing punitive punishments and coming in with interventions that help students instead of, "You've made a mistake," swat on the head, ten-day suspension, to be able to find ways to resolve those issues. We still have problems with, in a lot of places, we have the, uh, automatic, uh, we have the attendance violation failure policy, which if a child misses school for a number of days, usually related to something bad happening at home, they're penalized for it. We still have, uh, around, I think we mentioned, the weapons policy. If I take out a laser pointer and threaten you with it, the school technically is allowed to penal, well, it's actually technically required to penalize you very severely for that. Coming in with waste at that point, before stepping to severe punishments, interventions to prevent and correct, I think will be very helpful. Also give another shout-out to a lot of advocacy work that specifically the Revister Forum has done, and a lot of students have done around this issue.
So this is a really important topic right now. I'm pretty sure a lot of you are on social media, and there's this very powerful campaign taking place right now called Me Too. And it's women from across the country just naming everyday things in their lives where they have experienced being uncomfortable around men, whether that was in an elementary school setting or, you know, high school setting, or as an adult, or not even necessarily an adult-to-child relationship, a peer-to-peer relationship. So I think this, this question is very important, and what it showed me was the power of social media and how a lot of times we think that we can program our way out of things, and yes, there's definitely a place for programs, and I'm grateful for all the programs that was listed. I'm on the board of the YWCA Cambridge, and we have a program called Girl Gold, Girls Only Leadership Program, where we support middle school girls and build their confidence and self-esteem. And I also realize that particularly as someone that is a trained pastor, that when something bad happens to a person, whether it's a male or a young woman, the first thing that they look for is just a person that they can trust, that they can talk to to get it out. And so everyone here, we have a responsibility as a, simply being a community member, if you're in a situation where someone has trauma that takes place, to be able to listen and be able to be a first responder, and then be able to direct them to all the programs that was listed here. I think if we are able to build that skill set, then we will be able to support young girls, as well as young boys that experience trauma, and change the dynamic of this culture that is really about subjugating young girls, um, particularly around sexuality at a really young age, and it's time for us to move beyond that. So I'm grateful for the campaign that's happening now, I'm grateful that it's elevating our awareness, and I'm grateful that it allows us that, allow us to see that we too can be a part of a meaningful conversation that changes society, one person, one conversation at a time.
So I'd also like to comment on the meme that's going-
So I'd also like to comment on the meme that's going around social media right now that Ms. Bowman was just talking about. The number of women I'm seeing on social media who are saying Me Too, that I consider close friends and dear to me, is absolutely sickening. And I'm looking at the men in the room who are here, there aren't as many of us, but we need to be better. We need to be better. This is enough. The one thing I would say is that there are groups in Cambridge, like Men in Cambridge, where there are men who are having these conversations around hyper masculinity and are looking to play a significant role in decreasing the amount of violence that we as men do perpetuate. You know, Ms. Dexter said that men tend to be the ones who are perpetuating the violence. It's not a tendency, we are. Like, we just need to say that as a fact, and that there are organizations in Cambridge that are looking to do better in creating a different kind of man, a better man. So I do think the schools, we can work to create mentorships with Men in Cambridge. The second organization I'm thinking about is Bark, which is out of Bishop Allen Drive, Boston area rape crisis center, that I do think does an excellent job of supporting the needs of women who are, have experienced sexual violence. And the third one is just something that, you know, Peter mentioned, which is our school mediated, our school district mediation resource, particularly Chandra Banks, and be able to support all of our students in having these types of really difficult conversations around how we solve conflict. Conflict is a natural thing, but it doesn't need to be something that leads toward suspension or violence. I do think that we have the skills and the ability to be able to talk about our issues, and that Chandra Banks has been a leader for this city and our students in doing that, and that we need more mediation specialists like Chandra to be able to support all of our students in the district in order to help us sort of prevent violence before it starts. Thank you.
I would say that, no, we don't have enough. I think it is encouraging to echo everything all of my, hopefully future fellow colleagues have said about this issue. But I want to say, I agree with Patty that it definitely, we could be doing more to help provide trainings for teachers to help identify certain situations, as well as I agree with Will about making sure that we have better lines of communication, so that teachers are able, or anyone who needs to help a student, is able to identify where they should go and how they should go. I also would like to add that I think it would really be powerful if we could even reach back to our own community and find former students in the area that would want to help and start taking leadership on this issue, and by getting them engaged to provide yet another resource, because providing role models that grew up here would be a very powerful way for students to make a change.
I mean, I think the, the safety of our children and really of our community as a whole is, you know, an underlying concern that, you know, is the starting point for all that we do. And, no, I think we don't have enough resources towards it until this is a non-issue. I think knitting these resources together, making them as accessible as possible should be a continued focus. I mean, Will brought up an excellent point about how universities are improving their work on, you know, right away, making sure this is what happens as students enter the community, and we can work on that as well. Cambridge Health Alliance and the public health infrastructure we have in Cambridge has been a really strong support. The Guidance Center provides really excellent resources. I highlighted the family liaisons as part-time staff members, they're doing incredible work. I think we need to look at expanding their roles to full-time, supporting that program. I mentioned also bringing on family liaisons at the middle school. They are also a point of contact, not only for, towards the elementary schools, I mean, these are important things, but also for services and resources in the community. And Ms. Bowman, Mr. Kimber, both mentioned Me Too movement that's going online today, and I have to say, it was almost hard for me to focus on preparing for this today. This is reading this. Not new to me, unfortunately, I'd known about this epidemic of, if that's even the right word, of sexual violence and sexual harassment, but seeing it over and over again, once again today, I mean, I literally felt sick, and I do thinking about it again, and we need to be sure we're addressing this, not only at the high school, but as others have said, really K through 12, and bystander intervention training, and all kinds of comprehensive supports, and with a special focus on the way this is different for girls and women, and for LGBTQ folks, and also the way men are impacted, and the way people can be perpetrators. So we have to really look at all of that. And I think we can, I think we've done a lot of great things in that regard, but it's just too important to let it go.
When it comes to the issue of bullying, violence at any level as it pertains to our school system, I think it's important that we have counselors, that we have safety cops, that we have mediation specialists, but it's all for nothing if these violent or bullying acts aren't being reported. In most cases, the person being bullied or victimized does not want to report the issue to any school official because they're fearful of retaliation and looking a certain way amongst their peers. So it's important that in order to really address this issue, what I've seen and realized is that we foster a community that is not accepting of violent and vicious acts, that we promote programs like Qualls that raises young men, holds them to high standards, and teaches them that bullying and violence isn't acceptable, and that we support programs like the Gory House. I'm sure all you, all you familiar with the Gory House. The Gory House, every year, has a festival to celebrate their community and promote actions against violence, and to show the community that we're one, and acts of violence are unacceptable. So more than the schools, we need to build communities that foster safe atmospheres. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to each of you as well, and I hope what people are getting is that while it's just a reality, we have teachers sitting here, it's a reality that the issues are so broad, right? I mean, that our educators and our school community members are really charged with every single issue that faces all of us individuals as adults, adults who have children, who don't have children. All those issues are reflected in what our families and what our students are challenged with. I will just say that on the issue of violence, right, whether it's domestic violence, sexual assault, the violence in the neighborhoods, one of the things I would encourage all of you, even over the next 22, 22 days, is to really think about the resources that the school provides, whether that's the incredible work of Melody Brazo or Chandra Banks. Go to them and ask them, the work that they are charged to do, how supported are they, and how able are they to do that, being a one-person show? And what else would they need in order to do that? I would encourage you to go to Transition House and go to Bark. Ask them, how easy is it to work with the Cambridge Public Schools, whether it's our high school or our elementary schools? What do those partnerships really look like, and what would need to change in order to enhance those partnerships? I think there's a lot there. And to remind the school committee members, you guys have an incredible role, where you have direct access to the superintendent, that many of our educators, staff, and community partners, they don't have that. They don't have his ear in that same direct way. You are the pipeline for raising in the, the level of priorities and urgency that reflect the community's needs. And I thank you. So I think we're probably going to get maybe through two more rounds of questions here, since I really have chosen to try to be just liberal with the time, because I think part of what people are getting is not just your quick 30-second elevator pitch, but they're also getting a sense of who you are and how you answer a question, which says a lot about who you are and how you will respond to each other and the community as a school committee, because nobody can be the person of change by themselves, right? Really, as I always say, you can be the smartest person with the best ideas and still be the most unproductive and unsuccessful person in any elected body. So my hope is that people are really getting a sense of the richness of each of you. I will go ahead and combine two more questions here, and at this point, I am going to ask you to try to keep the time to where it is, so we can really get through this, and maybe one or two more, and thank you for that. So, what are your specific ideas for ensuring the academic success of boys of color in Cambridge? And I would invite you to also to just say, also, girls, I think, children of color in Cambridge, who statistically are not as successful academically as children who are from Caucasian families. Then I would also ask, there's a question here that says, what concrete steps do you think the school committee should take to dismantle white supremacy in Cambridge Public Schools? And I love that, that's just like a question on Tuesday in Cambridge. And I know that you all have been thinking a lot about these questions, and so I'd love to hear your answers, and I think we're going to start with you.
Oh, I get to go first?
Yeah, you went last one, try to, go back and forth here.
Alright.
So how much, are we going to answer both those questions in one minute each, one minute total?
Well, good, I was just wondering, so that we all... Try to do it as quickly as you can. She does. There you go.
I need, I need about two minutes on this.
So, in order to support the academic success of boys of color and girls of color in the Cambridge Public School System, what I'm going to do is this, another reason why I'm running, which I forgot to mention earlier, is I'm running because the great Richard Harding encouraged me to run, who's now running for city council, and when I'm elected to the school committee, what I'm going to do is this, I'm going to pick up his proposal to tie a principal's evaluation to the numbers, to the number of teachers of color they hire, retain, and interview. Why is this important? Our district is officially majority-minority, about 53% students of color, five in 10 students are students of color. We currently have about 23% teachers of color, two in 10 teachers of color. When I was at the high school, a teacher named Donald Burrows, who many of you know, changed my life forever. I was at the lower end of the achievement gap until he showed me one book, The Invisible Man by Ralph Ellison. That book changed my life and allowed me to succeed. Now, in terms of dismantling white supremacy in the Cambridge Public School System, I would say this, Cambridge has a good school system, because regardless of race, regardless of gender, regardless of class, if you come into the school systems and you commit to academic success, you can go to any school, any school you want to. I started at the lower end of the achievement gap and went on to Brandeis, now I'm a financial analyst. So, when it comes to dismantling white supremacy, I challenge any of you to go to a Black Lives Matter rally and see who the demographic makeup of those, of those, of those people are there. I don't really understand what this means, and I think it's divisive, I think it's irresponsible, and like Obama said, children aren't born hateful, they learn hate, and this rhetoric teaches hate, and I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, one or two minutes is not enough to fully address this, but I think I'll just start by saying that it, one of the key ways we address this is by having this conversation, is by naming these issues and talking about them, and engaging honestly, openly, in a way in which we're willing to challenge each other, in the spirit of community that I think we all share. And I hold myself accountable to that, that I need to be consistently challenging myself to be learning and growing on these issues. I think that some of how we support students of color in the district, a number of these things came up earlier, but we need to be collecting the data, so that we know in aggregate, as well as individually, how we're doing. We need to support not only the hiring of teachers and other staff and administrators of color, but support them when they're here. And we need to work, I think, in really close conjunction with city council to make sure that we are supporting children and families comprehensively, because these, because nobody is going to succeed with just what we're doing in the schools. We need to ensure that our school system, specifically to address dismantling white supremacy, is not structurally replicating white supremacy. It's, you know, easier said than done, but it's important to do, and it's also not a zero-sum game, I will add. It is something that will benefit all children in our community, and I think acknowledging that helps to move this from some kind of an oppositional, not something that's, it will definitely be challenging work, it's always been challenging work, but it's not oppositional. This is us coming together with the goal in mind that we all want to get to, or I certainly want to get to, that I think will benefit all of us and our wider community. And Cambridge can be, as it has in so many ways, a real beacon, especially in what in many ways is a really dark time, or a time that reveals darkness in our, in our country that's been there all along, I think would be a more accurate way to put it.
You picked a real easy one for the short amount of time to answer. No, it's a great question. I would say as far as supporting our students of color, you know, both boys and girls, I think what I mentioned earlier about highlighting programs that work, and making sure that we're communicating throughout the district, how they're working, why they're working, and how we can maybe potentially pilot it out or try it out in different parts of our schools. I think hiring more teachers that culturally reflect the students in our classrooms is another big step towards that. But one thing I want to talk about is actually not in the schools. I think even if we have our schools running on all cylinders as perfectly as we can, we still need to make sure that we have that home-to-school connection, so that students continue their learning, not just in the school day, but even when they're at home. And I'm going to give yet another well-deserved shoutout to Robin Harris about how her work with particularly going out and doing home visits to make that connection with families. I think that's one very important step to challenging that. As far as overcoming the systemic racism, whoo, in just 30 seconds, I'll say this, I'm a straight white male, and I don't think that it's fair for me to say I'm the one who has the answers to all these questions. I think it's a community, like I said, bringing as many people from all different ways of life, both different socioeconomic backgrounds and also different cultures, together as a community, we need to tackle this. And that's why having more opportunities for us to get together as a community, to have conversations with people you might not normally get a chance to talk to, is so crucial to this work, so that we actually know each other more so as neighbors, and less so as just people that we walk by on the street.
So, in regards to dismantling the legacy of white supremacy within the Cambridge Public Schools, or just working, having schools be places where white supremacy works to be dismantled, I think that this issue just needs to be very intentional around the previous experiences that students of color, educators of color, have had within the Cambridge Public Schools, and hearing some of those stories. I do believe that there are many families in Cambridge who are of color, who are selecting the charter schools right now. Some of those families have had some really horrible experiences personally within the Cambridge Public Schools, and choose not to want to replicate those experiences with their kids. I think those conversations need to be happening, and we need to be asking those families what their experiences have been in the Cambridge Public Schools, and be able to really work towards dismantling the legacy of white supremacy, and really just being, I do think additionally, like I said, intentional about this issue. One of the things that the superintendent has stated very clearly in the strategic plan for the district is that we care about and want these results for all students. It hasn't been, equity has been an issue that has affected students of color, African-American students, Latino students, low-income students, and we need to own that. As a school district, we have not held up our bargain of being a social justice-oriented school district. So I do think just by recognizing the problem and owning it, we stand a better shot to be able to work towards dismantling this legacy. Just to be able to name a couple of ideas real quick about how we can support all students, particularly our African-American students and Latino students. I think the first thing that we can do is work towards hiring more teachers of color and being able to support those teachers while they were there. I know that's something that's been said previously, but as someone who is only here in Cambridge, because of the initiative of the 1970s for teachers in Cambridge to go out there and hire teachers of color, my father ended up in the Cambridge Public School District in 1970. I don't know really what the school district is doing in terms of being active and seeking out those recruits in some of the historically black colleges in the country, or other places where black teachers are, but I do think that is a step that we can take. I think another thing in terms of hiring teachers of color is to look at the data that we have currently in our school district, and seeing how many teachers active, how many teachers leave the school district every year, and doing a better job of actively posting jobs in November, December, for the next following school year, because by the time teachers leave the school district and say that they're not coming back in May, June, many of those good teachers are already taken. If we want the best teachers in our school district who can reflect our school district, who really want to work towards dismantling the legacy of white supremacy, and can do the best job of supporting our young students of color, then I do think we need to work on making sure that we're putting the best hiring practices and supports in place to assure that that's going on.
In order to really look at the challenges facing our young kids of color, we really have to look at policy. That is the responsibility of our school committee. Clearly, that is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to evaluate the superintendent, approve the budget, and look at policy, and that is what I have done in my first term. When we had to review policy and look at suspension rates, you know, for K through second graders, to have something on our books that said, you automatically got suspended for 10 days by bringing a weapon, alcohol, drugs to school, who does that disproportionately impact? But guess what? It was on our books. It was our policy in the city of Cambridge, this place that is so progressive and is so liberal, and what I have tried to do in my first term... And what I have tried to do in my first term is really push this city and this school committee to live into our values, because suspending a kindergartner for something they don't understand is not living into the values, and that creates social inequity. Same thing for young girls that had challenges with being able to access feminine hygiene products. If they don't have the money for this stuff at home, who are, who's raising their hands to go and ask permission to go to the guidance counselor? That's taking away from learning time. You want school committee members that's willing to take a step back and look at the policies that we have in place and, and really have rigorous conversations around how they're impacting our students. And that will chip away at some of these achievement gaps as it relates to dismantling white supremacy. I know I'm over my time, but it's a real thing. White supremacy is systematic. And in order for us to tackle it, we're gonna have to look at it from a systematic perspective, and that is the responsibility of the school committee. No one in here is gonna raise their hand voluntarily and say that I have built-in biases, or even probably would recognize them. I'm a woman. Thank you for raising your hand. I mean, even myself, I come from public housing, but I, I recognize that when people see me, they only see a woman that lives in North Cambridge, that own her home and have this nice life. They don't know the other part of the story. And because my reality has changed over time, I have to check myself even when I interact with people, to make sure that I'm fully aware of any type of biases that I bring to the table. Those are the conversations that we need to be having, and we need to connect those conversations to the policy matters that come before the school committee in a way that will chip away at the policies that create systematic oppression that disenfranchise kids of color from multiple different backgrounds.
We've had a persistent achievement gap for a tremendous long time, and I think to address it, we need to do something different than what we've been looking, doing before. We need to look at the science of learning, and we need to look at the psychology, the science of psychology. There are a few things that help. One is high expectations. This was first discovered around the 60s with the Pygmalion Effect, an experiment you're gonna today. You label a few kids as gifted, and at that point, randomly, by the end of the year, those kids were outperforming everybody else. So it was rediscovered as a stereotype threat. That was rediscovered in educational policy work as something that is key. High support. When students come in with knowledge gaps, you need to have remediations to close those knowledge gaps. That is key. That is absolutely key. When we put in those things, I've worked on projects that fed into an intervention at San Jose State University where we will bring course completion rates for interactive electronic courses from 59% into the 90s by using those interventions, and then put in a full MIT course there, completely close the achievement gap. We've had similar success in community colleges by relying on the science of learning. So, that's sort of, I would say, the very short story. Many schools have done this. FMA has no achievement gap. FMA fused these principles with a very Cambridge perspective, and on last year's MCAS scores, high-income and low-income students performed identically. There were interventions in high-support, high-expectations charter schools that used a very different model that completely closed the achievement gap. There's an article in the New York Times about this. There are interventions that were based on, in California, on a blended learning model. Also, it doesn't matter if you do these things, the, the support with technology, with mentors, with teachers, with other students, we can close the achievement gaps. It's a matter of bringing these things into the school district. With regard to the divisions we see in our school, I will say that that is also a place where we need to look at science. What we know is that as we discuss issues of race, of culture, of ethnicity, there are several ways we can address these. One of them is preparation for bias. A second one is cultural, racial, national pride in the ethnicity that you have. The former approach causes growing divisions and growing gaps. Students expect to fail and to be stopped. This latter one causes convergence. If you want a popular book about this, Nurture Shock talks about this in great detail and provides references. We need to go from labeling to placing people on a spectrum. This is something used in multinational corporations. Hofstadts Cultural Dimensions is a way you can look at cultures not as, "Here is a person from this culture, here's a person from this culture, but here are all the dimensions on which people differ." And then you stop groping people. That goes back to the Robbers Cave Experiment. Simply labeling one group of people one way and different another way, however you do it, leads to division. So it's a lot about changing our language in ways that is grounded in the science of psychology. I think that if we can do that, we will close all of these divisions. I'll just finish up by saying that I've taught in China. I've worked on educational projects in Nigeria. Next week, I am flying to ISIS refugee camps in Jordan. I've worked across settings with much bigger cultural differences than Cambridge schools. This problem isn't fundamental. It's one we shouldn't expect or live with or think is normal or usual. It's one that we can solve on both the divisions and on the achievement gaps.
So, I, I definitely agree with a lot of what other people have said. And I also want to say that this is not something that we need to invent a new solution for. This is something we need to be listening, or I can say from personal experience, I know Jake also mentioned it, I'm a straight white man. I don't know more about dismantling white supremacy than a student of color or a teacher of color. And I think regarding teachers of color, we don't need to be speculating about what teachers of color have requested, because they've requested things multiple times to various different channels in the district. Specifically, I've, I've spoken to some of the teachers of color who left the district, who I know were profiled in, in various different media articles over the summer. And they've pointed out that Boston has had a lot more success than we have in retaining teachers of color with a mentorship program. They've also pointed out that hiring committees that have fewer than 30% teachers of color can be hugely problematic in interviews with teachers of color. And that's, and they pointed out that, something I fully support was that every hiring committee should have 30% teachers of color. On a student level, I think one program that was in CRLS a couple of years ago and no longer is, it was called Real Talk. And it would be, there were teams of students who were one white student and one student of color, who would go into classes and would speak on, like, their experiences of privilege and provide a space in which students could talk. These are the kind of policies, and these are the kind of programs that we should be supporting. And I think in order to do that, the most important thing the school committee can do is acknowledge that this is a problem, and more than that, say that for every policy decision we make and every budget we pass, this should be a primary consideration. When we're talking about extracurriculars, we should think largely about what the impact on white supremacy in the district should be. When we're talking about curriculum, we should think about how teaching a curriculum that focuses on the history of white people in America largely is not as productive as if we were to teach a curriculum that focuses on the contributions that people of color in Cambridge and in the port have made over the years through activism. We can be doing a lot more, and we can be doing a lot more by listening to what people are requesting. And I think that that's something that will only happen when the school committee says that this should be a top priority when we're making any decision.
Thank you. Yeah, so white supremacy is the cause of achievement gaps and wealth gaps and education gaps and all the other gaps that we have between groups. Because if you don't have gaps between groups, everybody is integrated and has equal opportunity. But if you have something like one group that is violent to another group, then you're not gonna have that. So I see white supremacy and racism as a form of violence, which we were just talking about, and you have to deal with this in multiple ways. I agree with absolutely everything that's been said. I think one thing we need to do first is not underestimate what racism and white supremacy are. They've really baked into our history. My mother grew up in St. Louis in the 1930s. It was a total Jim Crow town. When I grew up in Maryland in 1960s, there were segregated neighborhoods that had covenants against blacks, Jews, and Catholics. So this is recent history and is very powerful. So I think acknowledging that is the first thing. So, a, a second thing is, I think, agree with Monika. As policymakers, we have to look at every single thing we do and say, "Does this have differential impact on white students or, or students of color?" And I agree with all of our programs. And the third thing, because all those things are opportunities to learn. Being in an extracurricular, being in a particular type of class, et cetera, being able to get to school regularly are opportunities to learn. But I think what we're saying here is, everybody has to be totally focused on that, because it's not like one thing. It's the, it's the whole structure in which our whole society operates. So we need to be very aware of that, and everybody who works in our schools has to be very aware of that, and we need to be thinking about it all the time. Thank you.
And I want to thank all my panelists. This is, you can feel the passion and the energy behind the answer to this conversation, so that is very hopeful. And I think very key is that we be very intentional, be proactive, and have high expectations for all our students. And I think nothing was more powerful to me than the work that I have done through Girls Media and talking to the girls that, that they talk about media literacy and how these girls, African-American girls, low-income, and how they feel, how they see themselves perceived in media and in their schools. And I think that if we want to break down barriers, then we have to be very intentional about how we support all students. We definitely have to be able to recruit and retain a diverse, high-quality teaching pool to make sure the teachers are as diverse as the students that we teach. We do, we know that we're gonna lose 100 teachers each year, every year. And so what are we doing to be proactive to make sure that we have the quality recruitments that are as diverse as the students that we teach? We also know that the most important thing is authentic voice, student voice. We do not have enough space for that. We do not have enough space, save space for that. And in order for us to give the students the, the time and space and confidence to speak about their real-life issues, we have to be able to value that and give them time and space for that. Thank you.
Wow. I'll start with some of the specific ideas, because I can think of three in addition to what's already been mentioned. Summer learning loss is key. Summer learning loss is responsible for much of the achievement gap. During the school year, our, our schools do a phenomenal job of keeping kids learning, and it's during the summer that some of that loss happens. There are effective programs about that to build on breakthrough for all. Effective advisory system, that's what the best schools, when you talk about it, the effective advisory builds on the idea of, of solid relationships and making sure students' needs are being met. And third, use student surveys to give teachers feedback. Students know when they're learning. They know when they're being paid attention to. They know when it's effective. Let's use their voice in order to understand and give teachers what they really deserve, which is feedback on that. And I agree on some of the policy issues. I was glad when Monika joined, we had started changing our discipline policies years ago, and we really got rid of so many of the more draconian efforts, and we continued that in this term. I had started that by meeting with the SHOT Foundation, another local resource for addressing these issues. That meeting happened five years ago, and we started working immediately on our programs. On white supremacy, you know what? White people have to do it. We have to own it, and we have to be responsible. We have to be, we can't sit around and say it's not something that we should even lead in terms of me talking to white people. That's what we have to do. It's uncomfortable. It's hard, and if we don't do it, nothing's gonna change. We have to make sure people see those videos and understand what they're saying. When you have a black guy and a white guy walk down the street with a gun, guess what happens? They are not treated the same. When you have people caught on, there's a famous video about a bicycle thief. You know what happens? The black guy, in three seconds, people are on, saying, "What are you doing?" The white guy, it takes about half an hour before people say, "What are you doing?" The white woman, people go help her steal the bike. It is amazing, and that's the uncomfortable reality we have to live in. It's not history. Yes, it is history. My mother, you know, got suspended from college for trying to integrate a pool. African-Americans don't think it isn't happening today. In our own high school across the way, there was not only a swastika, but there was race hate language found in bathrooms. You know, we do have to address this. We have to own it. And, and I know that I want to work with other groups, but I also know that as from my position of privilege, I can call out and talk about racism that I see in a way that is very powerful, because I am in that position of, of privilege for that. Just like I hope that all the men, which has been talked about here on the Me Too. You know, when women get harassed, why aren't we focusing on the people who are doing it as opposed to us having to claim that it happened to us? Me too.
Thank you. So we're actually, we're gonna wrap this up, and I'm gonna give everybody here a minute to say, you could say, a minute to actually say if there's something you want to be remembered by tonight, whether it's an initiative, a characteristic, a trait of who you are, or an accomplishment. There was some interest in maybe also responding or expanding on some comments that were made. If you'd like to, you'll have an additional 30 seconds. To the Margaret Fuller House, I want to say again, thank you for holding this civic forum tonight. Give a big round of applause. Thank you for the work that you do every day in our community. If you want to know more about the candidates and their positions, really, we, it's, it's tough, right? We just touched on things. You have 22 days to find them, and they're happily will come talk to you. They'll meet you. They'll come to your door. They'll knock. They'll bring you coffee. The election is November 7th. Please make sure you vote. You have till this Wednesday to actually register to vote or register other people to vote. I want to say as a parent, as an elected official, as someone who grew up here in Cambridge public housing, is the first to graduate from my family, from Cambridge, Ringe and Latin, I want to say thank you for your passion and your interest and your willingness to try and serve. With that, you have a minute to say what you want people to take away from you tonight, and if there's 30 seconds that you'd like to expand on anything that's been said, please do. I'll let you, we're gonna start with you, so I'm gonna grab the mic.
I want to be remembered tonight as just a kid from Cambridge who went through the school system, who was at the lower end of the achievement gap, who was an ESL student, who worked hard, took advantage of the resources available, and went on to do well. And I want to remember, remember me as a guy who gets things done, who's honest, and is committed to his community, because I grew up in this community. I work with the kids. I'm a big brother to a lot of them. I'm a mentor. I'm a role model. I teach chess to a lot of them. And these are our future leaders. So we have to make sure that all students have an equal education, they're held to high standards, and that they, they're all getting a great education. But I want to say one thing. I want to remember me as a person that's not going to shame white people for being white. I cannot, how can you be mad at a parent for advocating for his child based on his skin color? How can you look at a student in kindergarten or pre-K and tell him that you're a racist? That's not right. What I'm gonna do when I'm elected is I'm going to look at the policies and look at the policies that are disproportionately affecting black, black and brown students and strive to change them. But more importantly, I'll end on this. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go into the community and make peop, make parents of color aware that they're empowered, that they can participate in civics, that they can, they can participate in their children's education, that they're welcome to the table, that they can vote, that we need more people like Robin Harris. We need to recruit and retain more people like Robin Harris. But I am going to strive for each and every student, and I ask for your number-one vote on November 7th, and then consider these guys, because some of them are good too. Thank you.
So I'll bring all this together with my, I guess, I guess, minute and a half. So I, I guess I should be promoting myself right now. I mean, I have to say, I'm feeling really grateful that we have this group, including a couple of people who had to either leave early or couldn't be here, that we have this group to, to draw on for, for our school district. On November 7th, you're, you know, putting together your dream team from the choices you have up here. And I think, you know, when you're assembling that team, I think hopefully now you have a sense of, in my case, of my ideas, my commitments, my moral compass from this forum, which I think actually was a great format for getting some of that across, I hope. But I can bring to bear my experience as a classroom teacher. I bring to bear my perspective as a parent of Cambridge public school kids, one of whom will spend pretty much this entire next school committee term in upper school. It might actually feel like she's in upper school to her the whole time. I know it can feel pretty overwhelming, but I am right there. And I've had a career as a communicator in developing, implementing large-scale, education-focused programs. And I think bringing those skills together will help me work together with this team. I get really excited about those possibilities of how we'll be able to work together, how we'll draw on these various perspectives that are here, because there is a range that's represented. And, and I really look forward to having that opportunity to sort of, and to talking more with all of you and, and spending the next 22 days knocking on doors of strangers in Cambridge and getting even, to be even deeper connected to this city that's been my home for 16 years and that has been my children's home their entire lives.
First off, thank you to everyone that put this on. Thank you to Representative Decker. Thank you to all of you for being here. Being engaged in civics is incredibly important, so thank you for taking the time. I often, you know, get asked while out canvassing what separates me from everybody else here running. And, you know, I usually give, "Well, it's my experience in the classroom and also the fact that I've worked at almost every school and in almost every grade level." But it, it's not just that. It's also the sheer number of students that I've worked with throughout this city. throughout this city. I was trying to add it up the other day and I have to figure that it's easily over 1,000 different students. That's 1,000 different perspectives that I've seen and experienced and shared moments with. I've seen kids in the advanced math classes as well as those that are not in the advanced classes. I've worked in special education, I've worked in art classrooms and gym classrooms, I've worked everywhere from early ed and junior kindergarten all the way up to the high school. It's those experiences that I'll be bringing when I make decisions about policy. I'll think about each of those individuals that I've worked with and what they've gone through and what their needs are. And then I also would say that what differentiates me is my constant talk about the need to improve communication, both at a top-down level so that we're communicating better about what school committee is doing, what policies we are working on, but also a bottom-up level so we're gaining more input, gaining more feedback, reaching out to the community and creating policy with the community that's reflective of what their needs are. Thank you.
So I'm going to stand up here and ask for your number one vote. As someone who grew up here in Cambridge and attended public schools, as someone who dedicated his entire professional life to working in the public schools in Cambridge, I'm looking on this stage, I'm looking out in the crowd and seeing some of my former students here, and nothing makes me more proud. I'm certainly a Cambridge parent as well. I'm the only person who's running for the school committee who's been a combination of those three, who is a Cambridge parent, someone who worked in the Cambridge Public Schools, and who's someone who actually attended the public schools. So I do think that gives me a unique perspective. If you look on the flyers outside there, I believe there's one person who says that Black Lives Matter is on their flyer, so I think I stand out that way. If you want to take a look at the flyers out there, I do think I'm the one male candidate who says that we need to address sexism and feminism as a core issue within the Cambridge Public Schools. I think all you have to do is think, who do we want on the Cambridge Public School Committee? Do we want parents? Do we want educators who've worked in Cambridge? Do we want alumni of the schools? I'm the one person who I believe represents all three. And if you feel like those views are really important, I would ask for your number one vote on November 7th. Thank you.
So the thing I want you to remember about me tonight is I am a mother, I work a full-time job in addition to serving on the school committee. And I have to tell you, over the past two years, you know, holding all those things together is not easy. And people ask me a lot, Monika, we don't see you here and there. And I have to be honest with you, I've made a choice in the last two years. I decided to put all of my energy and my effort into doing the job of being a school committee. That means holding subcommittee meetings, that means moving policy work forward. And so I can stand before you today, well, sit rather, sit before you today and say that I got things done, expanded access to feminine hygiene products, no suspension policy, district-wide planning effort, that was significant. And also recently led an effort to support a sister district relationship with Puerto Rico to help them get their school system back together. That is meaningful, policy-driven work. And I want to come back to the school committee to continue to do that work. So I hope you consider me, Monika Bowman, as your number one choice and consider the work that I've done in the past two years and the work that I look forward to doing in the future. Thank you.
I'm Peter Mifros and thank you for being here and being engaged in civics. I will, rather than asking for your number one vote, ask you to do the research, to look over the platforms in depth and to understand what each of us stands for. That civic engagement is what's key and to drive your friends, colleagues, and others to do the same. If you're going to remember something about me, I have organizational experience. I've been a serial entrepreneur, I've worked in very high-performing organizations, I know how to bring that to the district. I'm a parent in the district, I'm a parent just starting in the district, so my son will hit the upper schools, the high schools. I've been a resident of Cambridge for most of my life. I have a deep background in the science of learning. I have taught in a range of formats, from pure online to blended, to small groups, to very hands-on mentorship formats, to traditional lecture formats. And I am new to the district, so I have less experience with members, but I will commit to spending a day in the classrooms of each of the schools of the district in my first year.
So again, I'm Will MacArthur. And I think that when you're voting for school committee, I think it's important to think about what perspectives you want at the table during something like contract negotiations, during something like setting a budget, during high-leverage moments that set the priorities for what our district will be going forward. And I think that it's important to have a lot of the professional backgrounds that a lot of the other candidates have. I also think that it's important to have the perspective of someone who has been in the schools recently. I want to give a specific shout-out to Monika's initiative around the menstrual hygiene products because I think that one of the things that made it so great was that it was engaged with student activism. And so I think that's an example of a great student-driven initiative. If I were on the school committee, I would commit to making a majority, or not a majority, I would commit to actively soliciting input from students about every decision that I were to make because I think that's how we make the best policy. I think that when students and teachers and families are engaged in the policymaking process, we get policy that is inherently better for everyone. And I think that commitment is what should make me stand out and my experience as a student in this district for 13 years makes me among these candidates uniquely capable of executing on that priority.
So I was here and many of us were here two years ago when we had forums for the 2015 election. And the world has really changed for all of us and for me from 2015. And I'll tell you three things that were really significant in my life that have really changed how I think about things. One was the election last year when I was completely shocked by the outcome, the presidential election. And that has changed almost everything. The entire front page of the newspaper is very, very different and we have a lot of new things to worry about inside and outside of our district. The second thing that happened to me, on the two days after the presidential election, I'm not trying to say this to sound soap opera, but my dad died. He was 93 years old, he had a great life, natural, died peacefully, it was wonderful. But it really changes things when your dad dies, I can tell you that. He had a very long time, so I thought he would live forever. And the third thing was I had my 60th birthday six weeks later. So this winter has been, I've gone through family pictures, I've thought about Trump and what my father stood for, et cetera. And I'm at the point in my life now where I really want to bring that reflection to the work that I do and I would like that work to be with the school committee. So I'm voting for Emily Dexter, number one, and I hope you will also. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Fran Cronin and I'm here because I oppose everything that Betty DeVos stands for. But in reality, I'm here because of my experience in Cambridge and the experience that I bring to the table. So as I mentioned, I'm a widow, I raised my two kids here myself, my daughter was a 2013 graduate, and I advocated for my son. And so I've worn several hats here as a parent, as a member of our community, and I'm probably the most experienced person who is running for Cambridge School Committee and I've also served on the committee. I'm a certified Orton-Gillingham reading specialist, I've taught, I've lived abroad, I taught ESL, I've created curriculum which I taught for after-school. And for four years, I'm very proud to say, I was elected to serve as co-chair of the Parent Advisory Council for Children with Special Needs. And I was able to bring that experience, my appreciation of the best practices, and my collegiality to the school committee when I served. And because of my ability to collaborate with my colleagues, I was able to get a lot done. I brought phonics back into the elementary curriculum, I got funding for a teacher-in-charge position around social-emotional learning, and I also got permanent funding for the first time for the support of the many immigrant students at our high school. And Mr. Fantini is not here, but he and I brought in a group called You Aspire, which counsels every single senior on their school choice, their financial and debt management as well as completing their FASSA. I'm the only candidate who works in City Hall, knows how the city government works, knows how our school administration works and knows the halls of all schools. And because of that, I have a couple of key initiatives because I know the diversity of our students and what it means to support our diversity. Greater access to early childhood education, making sure that social-emotional learning best practices are not just in some schools, but are systemic best practice in every single school. I'm also talking about a partnership in STEAM education. Not every student is going to graduate, and I mentioned earlier that we have a lot of students who do not succeed after graduation from high school. We need 21st century career pathways where we help these students get the tech jobs that are available through, I mean, through be able to work with Kendall Square, our high school and the community colleges that we have here in our city. And I also, as I said, we have to be intentional about our teacher hiring, make sure we recruit and retain a diverse, high-quality pool of teachers, that we have teachers in front of our students as diverse of our students. And the goal, as always, is to make sure that we graduate our students not just from high school, but successfully into their lives. I'm going to ask you for your number one vote. Thank you.
Goodbye. No. You guys deserve a round of applause. I can't believe you're sitting here. Oh my gosh. So, look, I love my job, I think I'm doing a really good job and I hope I get to continue because I really think I've made a hugely positive difference. You've heard a lot from us tonight. I have to say, I would be honored to serve with any group of these people if I was lucky enough to get reelected. This is a phenomenal group of people who bring a range of skills that is, we should all be lucky in our city that that is the quality of people. I just want to say something totally different, which is, if you haven't read An American Life, which is the biography of Margaret Fuller, it's a really cool book. It's set in Cambridge, it talks about her life and it describes Cambridgeport and her growing up in a Cambridgeport you would not recognize. It's, you know, puddles of wood shacks and it's really cool. Plus then you can go watch, you can go look at the monument to her in Mount Auburn Cemetery. It's, talk about local history. And her book, Woman in the 19th Century, was a phenomenally important book written in the eight, early part of the 19th century, in the 1800s, and talks about all the stuff we're facing today, all right? Women are facing today. So go read it. And the other one, if you want another suggestion, The Warmth of Other Suns, talking about the migration of African-Americans to the North, is a phenomenal read too. Nonfiction books, great. Happy election. Thank you, Patty. So I want to thank everybody again. I want to thank you all, give you all a round of applause about the candidates and those who stuck it out here. Just to remind you, the election is November 7th. You get to vote for six people. Your number one vote is the vote that decides who you actually want to make sure gets on. But think about, who are the six people that you would like to work together that represent the diversity of issues to the candidates? Please, if you haven't been over to Margaret Fuller House, get over there in the next 22 days and hopefully it'll be a place that you visit regularly if you don't already. Thank you.
And a round of applause for Marjorie Decker, please, as our host.